Mayor, are you ready? I can give you a minute if you want. Okay, I'm letting everyone in on the waiting room. Welcome to Chaska City Council meeting for Monday, January 3rd, 2022. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:06. Will you please stand and join me in this pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening. Sorry, we had interviews tonight for commission members and we had a lot of them. So we got, ran this right up to time. And so anyways, happy 2022. We turn the calendar. So we're off for another spin around the, around the world here. So let's see what happens this year. You never know. Hopefully it's, keeps getting a little better. Sometimes I wonder. So with that, who's calling roll now? I don't have Nate anymore. Who calls roll?
I can still do it.
He can still, I'm.
Are you sure?
I have a voice.
Is it in your job description?
I don't know if he can do it in that seat, though. You might have to roll over.
Whatever works.
All right.
I will, I will call roll if you.
You are, you are the man. You are the man.
All right. Councilmember Hatfield.
Here.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Here.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Grau.
Here.
Mayor Winchell.
Here. Excellent.
Real quick, for people who may not know, this is Nate Cabot's first day in as our community development director for the city of Chaska. Kevin Ringwald is retired. He's actually staying as a project manager for about five months here in the transition. But this is his first official day in the job as community development director. So welcome, Nate.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. My first day has been very enjoyable.
And you've filled in two roles a lot of times yet, right?
Yeah.
Because we do not have an assistant at this point.
Not yet. We're getting there.
Getting there. All right, with that, is there corrections or additions to the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the current agenda.
Some move, well. Second.
Is this sign language tonight? Okay, I did not ever hear. So all right, so I have a motion by councilmember Hatfield, second by councilmember Hubbard, to adopt the agenda. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Post name sign. Motion carries. Move to item five, consent agenda. These are items that need our approval, but not necessarily a conversation. But any and all can be pulled for a conversation if need be. With that, if there are no corrections or additions or questions, I would entertain a motion to approve consent.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Hubbard, second by councilmember Wong, to approve consent. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Post name sign. Motion carries. Congratulations to our pro town mayor, councilmember Hubbard.
Was that a part of the consent?
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought that was on, okay. Yeah, I saw it. I read it, but thank you.
Reconsidering your vote.
Nobody told me I had to do that.
By the way, you don't have enough votes to override it.
Did I tell you I was taking some time off this summer?
Oh, really?
Yeah, June, July, and August. Did I mention that?
Well, that's fine. Game on. Let's do this.
Think a world tour.
Okay, I just. All right. All right, with that, we move into action items. Appointment of city trustee to the Chaska Fire Department Relief Board.
Mayor and councilmember, the item in front of you tonight is something that we need to take up each year. It's appointment of a member, both a staff member and an elected official to the Chaska Fire Relief Association. The bylaws state that there's nine members of the, of the board. And then there's one official that has to be an elected official from the city council. And then also one that would serve from city staff. And our recommendation for the city staff, which has been the same person that we've had in that role for several years now, is Noel Grasik, our administrative service director and treasurer. I think Noel's done a great job of.
Noel's done a tremendous job.
Yeah, of really helping provide some real insight and education to the.
Guidance.
And guidance. He's, he's done a fantastic job. So we definitely recommend that he continue in that role moving forward. But it's really up to the council to make a decision on what the recommendation would be for the actual elected members. So this again is a beginning of the year item that we need to take care of.
That's, I mean, this is one that I've, I've sat on for a number of years. And I, I think this year I'm gonna step down from that position and see if there's someone on the council that has interest in wanting to take on that position with the fire department.
What's the commitment timelines, meetings, kind of those structure?
So it's, they're currently meeting, the last Tuesday of the month, they start at 5 o'clock. So it's once a month that they have board meetings, is how it currently operates right now. I don't see it changing. They put out their, the December meeting that I was at, they put out their January calendar. It was still staying that way. So barring something different. But there'll be, there's elections from the department, so it could be a complete change. And maybe it doesn't work for other of the new members. But right now, it's Tuesdays at 5 o'clock.
The last Tuesday?
Last Tuesday of the month.
Well, I mean, I, I don't serve really in any sort of board capacity. I mean, other than the Bicycle Steering Committee, which will wrap up not, in not too many meetings.
And you are on the Steiner House.
And the Steiner House is done. And the only other one I really serve on is the, well, not only serve, it's more of like an informational get together is the elected officials. And it's not like a board. So, I mean, I'm open to the call, but I'm also okay if other people are interested.
Do you want to talk about the Southwest Transit one, two coming up?
As far as the.
Because that's, because we'll be, because we're gonna have that conversation, that's another position for.
Yeah, there, there will be elected official on the Southwest Transit Commission that, that will have to point the recommendation coming from Southwest Transit is that we have two elected officials instead of one unelected official. So there will be another opening available on Southwest Transit that will be coming up.
Just getting kind of lonely there, that's all.
Are you saying you want me over there too?
We're the only city right now that doesn't have two elected officials.
I think just, and part of, and just the rationale for that was that, you know, by being elected official, especially now that we're going into more active lobbying with the state and state legislators and with other county officials, that it's good to have another elected to talk to because we're representing constituents, not just as an individual. So that was part of the rationale, and also to make sure that, you know, that information is brought back isn't just me and my opinion, right? It's representing the commission. So having two members here allows us to make sure we're sharing more information between Southwest Transit and us.
I mean.
So it sounds like Taylor?
Well, I mean, I was supposed to say.
I'll make a motion that Taylor goes to the fire relief. There.
Second.
Discussion.
With that, you shall include the staff member too, with a motion.
Oh, and, and that Noel would be the other city official on that committee. Whoever's second.
Yeah, I amend. No, well, I mean, I let my second be amended. Yeah.
Okay. So the motion is, is to appoint councilmember Hubbard and Noel Grasik to the fire relief board. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post name sign. Another congratulations. You're just chalking them up tonight.
Taking power.
Sucked over here.
That's the, the, that's the advantages of being your own boss, right?
Schedule around it.
Yep.
Put it in the calendar and let it ride.
All right, well, thank you for doing that.
Yeah, happy to help.
It's a good board. I just, I think it's good to get a little change. Never hurts and so good.
Great.
Good, good. Um, so, but that's not on our agenda, so that, that will be.
It's coming up, but.
It'll be coming up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but we just, I want to put it out there.
No, I, I think it's valid. I knew that we had had that conversation. And I thought we were going that way, but I wasn't sure. Because wouldn't that appointment normally be done now?
Well, the, the plan we're gonna do is to bring it back after we had a chance to discuss it and stuff. That Southwest Transit is gonna be the thing on the agenda for the work session.
Work session.
So my thought was that we'd have it on the 7th, along with all the rest of the appointments, once you guys have sort of heard sort of the vision of what's gonna be happening this year.
Okay.
Exactly. And I think part of it's also because we're talking about like taking on a new committee and scheduling. So that way whoever, you know, volunteered, everyone kind of look at that and said, you know, like the third Thursday of every month is gonna be for that too. So if anyone's interested.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
We have, does anyone else have any issues with commission appointments or anything? We don't have any other ones that we really have to assign, are there?
No, because, I mean, everybody else is sort of in their standing areas with community ed and Southwest Transit.
And you're downtown.
You're downtown. You don't do anything.
I don't do anything.
You're doing everything else.
As, as my friend Nate says, duties as assigned. My job, my job is to make you guys look good. Doesn't always work that way, does it? Or is it the other way around? How about if we move on to the next item? Adopt Resolution 2021-96, approving concept plan for West Creek Apartments Community Asset Development Group.
Mayor and councilmember, this is an item that's coming back from the December planning commission meeting. We actually gave the applicant the option of coming on for the December 20th meeting and said, well, you might be on at 2 o'clock in the morning.
They'll be there.
So he said he was okay with coming to the first meeting in January. So that's why you're seeing a planning item on a first meeting of the, the month. So we could at least try to, to make the, the meeting reasonable in length. The, the item in front of you is a concept plan for the West Creek Apartments. So this is the transitional housing project that has been proposed down at, I'll call it the old Guyan site, which is at the southwest corner of County Road 61 and Hickory Street. This is one that has been in different iterations, brought before the planning commission and the council in the past. The applicant will be able to talk about sort of the timing for why this is coming back now based on funding that they have received. The reason this is going back through a concept planning process is the original plan had actual, had two buildings on the site. One was a market rate apartment and the other was a transitional housing. That has been cut back to just include the transitional housing on the site. This did come from the planning commissioner with the recommendation for approval. So I'll turn it over to Liz to go through the presentation.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, members of the council, Mr. Mayor. We have a concept plan in front of you this evening for West Creek Apartments, which was formerly known as Hickory Street Apartments when it came through initially. This project is being proposed by Community Asset Development Group for a local company here in town. The aerial image is showing the highlight or the boundaries of the site that we're looking at this evening with the incorporation of a portion of city-owned land that is adjacent to the property and is needed to help facilitate this project moving forward. So the site is located in blue and then the additional one acre area of city-owned property is highlighted in orange there. So in terms of a background, just want to highlight more of the recent historical information surrounding this project. But it was back in May of 2019 that the initial or original concept plan came through for the Hickory Street Apartments. And like Matt mentioned, that entailed two apartment buildings. One was a market rate building and then the other one was for supporting young adults coming out of homelessness. This also showed the incorporation of that one acre piece adjacent to the project site. So that is no different than what is being proposed this evening. So it has taken some time for it to come back through our subsequent steps for the project. And one of those reasons being that the comprehensive plan did need to be updated to include the new use for this property for the project to move forward. So when it was the 2030 comprehensive plan, it guided it to be office. So with the 2040 update, which was also reviewed during those 2019 approvals, it was recommended to be changed to the downtown mixed use guidance in the comprehensive plan. So that has been taken into effect as of August of last year. Just want to show the layout of the 2019 concept plan. So that concept plan is being shown on this slide here. So the market rate apartment building was kind of the more front-facing building on Hickory Street. And then you had the supportive apartment building just to the rear of that with access onto Hickory Street. So again, that has been consolidated down. So those major changes that have occurred since 2019, the market rate building has been completely eliminated. The, at the 2019 approvals, the supportive housing apartment building was 16 units and now has changed to 19 units. And one of the concerns or questions out of kind of that, that initial concept plan was being able to have a 24/7 on staff or onsite staff person available, which has been a change they have implemented with this new revision. So they will be proposing someone who does live onsite within this apartment building. So one of those units will be slated for that worker. So the current request being asked this evening is for concept plan approval for a 19-unit apartment building that supports young adults coming out of homelessness. The comprehensive plan does guide this to be downtown mixed use, which fits with the use being proposed this evening. In terms of an overview of the supportive aspect of this building, so again, it will be directed towards young adults between the ages of 18 and 29 who are certified homeless within the Carver County area. Launch Ministries will be partnering on this project and will be the management or the group that will help with the homeless aspect of the building. So they'll set out a certain set of criteria for people to fall under in order to be allowed to stay in this building. So the criteria lists out the age within 18 to 29 years old. They currently have to be homeless and recommended by the Launch Ministries group to be a resident there. They have to be employed. They either have to be a previous resident or employed in Carver County or attended school in the county and continue to participate in the Launch Case Management Program and any other required programs by Launch Ministry. And then they must maintain employment as they live there. And then as we get into the overall site that we're looking at this evening, so with the city-owned parcel or a portion of that being included, it would be a total of two and a half acres in size. Currently, there's a single-family home on the site today with a detached garage. So those will be removed to support the new project coming forward. There's a scattering of trees on the site. Mainly the denser vegetation kind of is oriented to the southern portion. Two large storm sewer pipes do encumber the site itself. One across kind of the front area or more northeasterly area as it connects into the flood channel. And then another one bifurcating the property kind of midsection or midway through to also connect into the flood channel. So both of those pipes have been delineated and will be unimpacted by what's being proposed. So this is the site plan being proposed. Again, you'll only see one building as a part of this site plan approval. The access is being maintained on Hickory Street North, which would line up with the bus garage site just to the north there. And will provide a surface parking lot just to the rear of the building. The front of the building will mainly be oriented to the south there with direct access off of the parking lot. A patio will be oriented on the northeast portion of the side of the building. There's a zoomed in view of that in the top left corner of that slide. As it relates to the parking, they're proposing 22 total parking stalls for this building. This is a 19-unit building. So for any multifamily, it's usually a two-to-one, two parking stalls per dwelling unit requirement per code. However, with the, the type of use that's being proposed within this building and the understanding that not all of the residents here will own a car, there is less of a allocation needed for parking or less of a need for parking as stated for this type of building. So with 22 parking stalls, 19 units, one staff person, and not everyone having a vehicle and these being only single occupancy units, so only one person will live in each unit, staff is comfortable with the, the parking allowed onsite. And the zoning will reflect that as well. As it relates to transportation, since a lot of them won't have their own vehicles, there is information or a partnership with Southwest Transit that would be able to be available to the residents of this building. So if needed, there is a prime option available for them to use to go to work or other places within the Carver County area, but also other places outside of Carver County to get them to where they need to be. There is a sidewalk that stubs off kind of on the easterly portion of the site. So that will be extended to the north there to hook into the Chaska Boulevard and Hickory Street North intersection and then provide internal sidewalks, systems to connect into the building and parking lot onsite. And then lastly, usable open space is a requirement for multifamily uses. The patio will provide that function. And then moving forward, the applicant will have to show how they, they meet the, the minimum requirements there for the site to provide amenities and usable space for their residents. This slide is showing a couple of renderings of the building that's proposed. So it will be a two-story building. They designed it to be more of a residential look. So you have the gabled roof. You have glass shakes, brick being proposed as the materials there. From a code standpoint, they do meet the multifamily requirements laid out here. So there's no real issues with that. The color is being proposed. They're gonna utilize a Chaska brick color for the brick being used. So there will be some tie-ins to looking and feeling like a Chaska building here. These are a couple floor plans of the first and second levels, if we need to refer to those. So really, the, the main thing to work on that's been outstanding is the usable open space provision within the site. They'll have to work towards that on their preliminary and how they're gonna enhance the site to provide usable open space. So with that, we are asking you to make a motion this evening to adopt Resolution Number 2021-96, which is approving the concept plan for West Creek Apartments. And then based on the conditions that are listed within that. I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, the applicant is here in the audience to help answer questions.
Questions for Liz? Anybody?
I don't have any questions for Liz, no.
No? No? No?
Not for Liz.
Questions for the applicant?
Yes.
Yes.
Questions for the applicant are being asked. You coming up?
I'm Dave Pecornian with Community Asset Development Group. And we're representing the owner, which is the Community Asset Foundation. I'll give you a little bit of background on the reasons for the change from the two buildings to one. Back, boy, what is it now? Over a year ago, we had the concept plan approval. It did have a number of conditions. One of the conditions was a requirement that we comply with the 125-foot setback. The concept plan was based on a 100-foot setback from the center line of the road. When we complied with the 125, the 26-unit building got reduced by six units. A second condition was that we work with the Corps of Engineers and comply with any conditions that they would have if they did a full 408 review. We spent a fair amount of time with the Corps. Based on our revised plan, they concluded we didn't need a full 408 review. Had we pursued the two-building, we would have had issues with meeting some of their requirements for setbacks and call it minimal development within a certain setback from the concrete channel. One of the other issues, and we kind of knew this all along, the concept plan, as we started working on a full detailed plan for the two-unit building, the stormwater, in order to meet the stormwater requirements for both the city and the county, we not only had to have a pond, but we had approximately a $300,000 additional cost for underground storage. By going to one building, we were able to eliminate all of the underground storage. And then lastly, the additional soil, soil borings concluded that the soils on the site to the rear were, well, not good. Quite frankly, the soils right off of Hickory Street are not very good either. But it works for one building. As we went through that process, one of the things you'll see when we're back with our preliminary building plans, which we've completed now or substantially completed, the area of the city parcel will be significantly less than one acre. And it all relates to how the building would setback from that. As we worked through this in the last year and a half, as Liz mentioned, one of the other changes, first on a positive standpoint, we now have the project 100% funded. The total project itself is, I think I know these. The construction part, the building is slightly more than $4 million. And that's funded through a combination of state loans and grants. And then as we worked with the state, they provided us an additional 2.6 million to provide 24-hour front desk. Now, you, that, you think 2.6 million, that's a lot of money for staffing. But you need to realize that this kind of project, it are, we generate very little in income from. from rent. One of our goals has been to have some of the units be non-subsidized. In order to be subsidized for a young adult coming out of homelessness, they need to prove that they've been homeless for at least 12 consecutive months. So our current plan of the 18 units, 12 to 13 of the units would be for people who can qualify for that, which to me is a little scary, that if I would have been homeless for 12 consecutive months when I was 24, I probably would have had a lot of other issues than just being homeless. But as we went through this, one of our board's goals was to have some units that we could subsidize locally and not have to meet the 12-month requirement, so that if somebody's been homeless for three months and they meet the rest of the criteria, they would be able to have a room, and in essence, they would pay little or no rent. When you're, with the subsidy, they would get, they would be paying rent of about $700 a month. But even with that funding, that doesn't cover the cost of operations, staffing, or project management. One of the requirements for the state is that we need to have not only an onsite manager, and that'll be the CAP agency, so they will be responsible for collecting rent and overseeing tenants and everything a project manager does. In addition to that, we will have a contract with Launch Ministries to provide case management and support for youth. So all of the youth will be required to be part of Launch's ongoing case management program, and that we're funding out of the operations. So in in putting our plan together that we need to submit to the state, we needed to show how we had funded not only the debt service cost over the 30 years, but we had to show how we had a funding plan for the first 20 years of operations. And and part of that additional fund or additional cost relates to the 24-hour staffing. Tell you, we've been successful. We've raised $180,000 from local individuals and corporations, and we felt that was really important, even though it's a small percent of the 6 million that we've had to raise total. It was critical to us to have that buy-in of people in the community. So that 19th unit, that now has been approved by the state. They've allowed us to add an additional unit. And our current goal is to be able to complete the rest of the state, well, city and state approvals, so that we can break ground in July of this summer. We open in July. We will be serving residents in the spring of '22. Can imagine one of the challenges, '23. One of the challenges we've had is costs keep increasing as we go through construction. Our current estimate is actually a million dollars more than it was originally. Did review the conditions that came out of the Planning Commission and reviewed by Liz, and we're fine with all of those. And as I say, we've basically some finished up now our preliminary building and site plans for the project. I'm available then to answer any questions. Also, Corey Mexit from Launch Ministries Online, and he's prepared to answer any questions about what's going on today in our larger community with young adults who are homeless. One of our goals, and restate this too, hopefully sometime in the next 30 years, we have no tenants. And if that happens, that'll mean that we don't have any youth in the area that are experiencing homelessness.
All right, questions for Dave?
I'll start with a question because you highlighted it a little bit. The 24-hour live-in, you mentioned the CAP ministry, so who staffs that, or who is that person, what do they do, what's their background?
Sure.
And who's responsible for like filling that role?
Sure. So during the day, some of that, call it onsite staffing, will be provided by one of the two counselors provided by Launch. Two days a week, we will have a person onsite from representing CAP. And then in the evening and overnight hours, the onsite, this person that's living onsite. We, that person under our evolving, and we're just finishing up our memorandum of understanding with our two providers, but the current draft is that that person will be responsible to Launch, and that person will probably be a person that has skills with counseling. No. And I don't want to get too specific because we haven't gone through that selection process yet, but that's kind of the way that it's being structured, and it's the the way that we're setting up the compensation. So the compensation for that person would be similar to the compensation for counselors.
And then, if I look at that, it's connected to this question. If I look at all the studios, there's no, other than the ADA studio that's compliant, there's no differentiation between the person, the live-in studio than in the other studios. Is that correct from my view?
That's correct.
What if that person like goes on vacation? Because I assume that even if they're like an employee like who's live-in, that, you know, they get a couple weeks of vacation, that, you know, they would take off at some point.
Well, I didn't hear the question exactly.
So, okay, so if there's a live-in person there, right? At some point, they would presumably go on vacation or
Oh, yeah, right.
Like take a trip or something like that, you know, they have family and things like that. So how would that be filled in for that 24 hours? Because they wouldn't be present for those, that gap.
So we'll have more than one person that will be providing front desk. There'll be times of the day that there'll be a person who's just sitting at the front desk, not the person that's living onsite. Now, we are also going to provide, because there's going to be, I mean, you could, you could come up with situations where there would be nobody onsite. I mean, you know, something happens. We will, our original plan, the way we had designed the building was to have remote monitoring, so we have both cameras onsite and access to front door in and out, and we will still have that. I can tell you that the, we have, there are two similar buildings like this in the Twin Cities. One's in Edina, the other one's in Eagan, and we've had discussions with both of them about operations. It was interesting to me why they thought an onsite person was, should be there. And their, their focus was they thought somebody should be there to support the tenants. It wasn't to be the house mother or house father or house person. It was to be there to be that support for tenants, that you need somebody that's there for that. And so that changed at least the way we were kind of thinking about how we staffed it. So that, and that's the reason we're focusing it on being an employee of Launch as opposed to being an employee of the project manager, the CAP.
Yeah, my only concern, a little bit, go ahead, Corey. Go ahead, Corey.
Yeah, I was going to just chime in a bit of that. So, yeah, we're really doing those, the front desk and live-in person as kind of crisis intervention. And so the idea is that if you view that that role as like a security person, then you're like reacting to things that happen versus if you have that person as more of like a crisis intervention, kind of working with the youth directly, then you're heading off, getting into situations before they happen, and you're there to support the youth when, when or if a crisis happens, so then you can just avoid anything getting escalated. To the question about kind of the vacation pack or whatever, in our proposal with with the Community Asset Foundation, as far as our staffing needs, we've built in PTO coverage for all of those, those front desk roles. So there's, we're, we'll be hiring enough staffing to cover those times when people are away.
Thank you. I, I think that, I mean, I, I like the hearing of it, and I, I think the approach of the proactive versus the security is a good, a good clarification. My question is about the differentiation between where that live-in person lives. It's just, I worry that that may limit who wants to fill that role, right? Because it's, it's a studio apartment, right? I mean, that's what it comes to. So that was my, but you know, obviously, I get it's got to fit the structure, but that was my only concern, is that since that doesn't maybe have a little bit different space or different setup, that the person who is interested in filling that role or accepts that responsibility, that's, that can be a difficult ask for a space living in concern. So that, like I said, I know you're doing your research and how it compares to other, but that was my only observation and clarification of that question.
It's not the exact same at all, but I kind of likened it to, and I don't know how aware you guys are of, like the New Beginnings House. They have a person that lives there that's kind of like been through it, and so in my mind, that's kind of what it seemed like to me is like, you know, and that wouldn't necessarily be exactly alike, but they kind of are the leader of the household, and they live there. And they aren't necessarily in need of those services, but they were at one point. And, and like I said, this person wouldn't necessarily be that same, but that's how I kind of processed it in my brain when I was like hearing this, is that, because yeah, it would definitely, there, there's not, not everyone wants to live in a studio, but in my brain, that's kind of what it was, is that the heart of the person that's going to want to do that job anyways is probably going to be one that's like, I don't care where I live, I want to do it. So that's kind of, I don't know, does that, did they?
I think, I think that's fair. I'm also on the board of the New Beginnings.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Yeah.
So certainly, that's, there's, there's some kind of similarities for how we're thinking about that. We, we kind of envision, like, and we certainly don't have this person hired yet by any means, but we kind of envision this as, in some ways, like an entry-level, fresh out of college kind of position, so a young person kind of getting, really getting started in their career in, in social services, case management. And so, so in a lot of ways, the, that overnight person is really more of a, this, this is more of an asset to them, because it's, you know, otherwise, as we know, and part of the reason we're doing this project is in order to live in this community, that's a, that's a pretty tall ask. And so for, for our staff members to be able to afford a department in this community and to be able to have a, a place where they can live and get the relevant experience at this, this job, we feel really good about that. So, so, yeah, I mean, it's, it's certainly, I think you're right, there, there's a limiting factor in who, who's, who's willing to take this, this kind of role. But for the folks that we're looking at for this role, we, we really see that as, as a fringe benefit that, that would be actually a good sell for this role.
Good. Thank you for that clarification.
Is a person that's a live-in, that he, he truly lives there, then goes to work during the day, or, I, I don't, it's not making a lot of sense to me yet.
Yeah, so, so we're slating this person to be kind of the evening front desk person as their full-time job, as well as then the, the overnight presence at the facility. So they would, they would be a full-time employee at Launch.
So is part of their compensation like either discounted or comped rent, or is that, yeah, so then basically that would?
Right, they may, they're total, they're going to be a salaried employee.
Yep.
And they, would they, they'll be, well, they're going to be on call at times of the day because they're going to be onsite.
Yeah.
Now, again, would, I do think that over the next 20 years, you're going to see some different ways that get staffed by who's available and what type of person. It might be somebody that works at Launch today, as Corey said, it might some, be somebody that is just out of school, might be somebody that just has an interest in, you know, will, that'll be for the, the future operational, for the nonprofit in our staff to be working and figuring out how that gets staffed, just like, you know, that's quite possible that 15 years from now, it won't be Launch Ministry that's providing case management. I hope they're still there 15 years from now, but, you know, we can't stand here today and tell you that 15 years from now, Launch Ministries, I can tell you 15 years from now, we will have a case manager. That's part of our memorandum of understanding with the state.
Go ahead.
Well, it's not on that topic. I was, it's sidelining, just because we were talking about safety and security of them living there for themselves, right? Access to the building, you know, is it, you know, key-carded, or, you know, what kind of, you know, access? Is it just key-carded, you know, is it just secured at night, or is it, you know?
Oh, it's key-carded, there's a
Okay.
And there'll be somebody at the front desk that will be monitoring who's coming in and out of the building.
Okay.
So, so that person then on the overnights will be sitting at that front desk? He won't be, he won't be in his room, and there's a call button that brings him down, or he could be in bed? So during the day, what does he do?
Two o'clock in the morning, he might be in bed, or she might be in bed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, during the day, they, they do whatever we do when we're not working.
Right.
Right?
Well, but is that the case? I don't know.
Yeah, it sounded like, so their role is to really just be there for the, the tenants in the building. So if there's a, there's, if there's a, something that they're needed for, then they would be there.
Yep, I get that.
But if not, then they're going to go, they're going to go to bed.
Well, that's what I'm trying to understand, because he's saying somebody's sitting at the front desk.
Well, no.
So if somebody's sitting at the front desk or not.
So, so
That's where I'm trying to get.
So I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah.
So it's, I think, so
Yeah, at two o'clock in the morning, there may not be anybody at the front desk.
So like if someone wanted to like, let's say someone works really late, and like, you know, they'd obviously have access, but let's say a friend wants to come over super late or something, is that something that they just?
Right, they may
They just live on their own, so they just take care of it on their own, right?
Exactly. They may have to get access into the building, though.
Okay, so they would. Okay, I just, I just was curious.
So again, let's appreciate, we're not, our clients are not, these are not people that are, are incarcerated. They're homeless.
Right.
So they are today in our community, number one, or I think Corey can correct me, there's 46 youth today that Launch is serving that are in temporary housing, and they're living in places. So the, the, but because they've been homeless, two-thirds of them for potentially a year or more, they're going to need some additional support services that traditional tenants wouldn't need. Now, could there be issues with the building? Sure, could there be in any apartment building, but we will have more oversight of the building than any typical apartment would have.
So let me kind of paraphrase back what I'm hearing to make sure I'm understanding it. So the model is probably most analogous to like maybe like a resident advisor in a college dorm, right? Where you have, they're basically comped for the rent with some, like, you know, some salary that goes along with it. But they're there, their obligation is to be there at night for support of the residents, you know, as they're needed, and they may have some obligation to have some sort of day shift of like maybe, I don't know, four or eight hours of the evening or something like that. And the rest of their time is like, you know, their own free time after, you know, like seven in the morning till whenever they go in evening shift, if they want to take a part-time job or visit friends or whatever. That's their own time, roughly, you know, just
Right. We will have, if you look at our budget and the way that the budget's set up, for person actually at the front desk is 20 hours a day.
Right.
Now, will there be times that that front desk, the person who's staying on, might be up more than that? But that's the way we budgeted the hours.
Right, but the hours are budgeted, but we don't necessarily expect the same individual for those all 20 hours, right? Because, so, you know, it'd be like, the person who lives in may cover like
Right.
Four or six of them, and then there's other day shift people that come in to cover those other hours throughout the daytime. So that way, during those 20 hours, there's somebody there, and then the person who's living there covers some block that's to be determined.
Exactly right. So that, for example, it may be at 10 o'clock in the morning, one of the counselors through Launches there For example, it may be at 10 o'clock in the morning, one of the counselors through Launches there and they're in the office and they're might be meeting with a client and they are the onsite person. And if somebody else has some other need, they can deal with that that person onsite.
Yeah, that helps, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to acknowledge that I personally have been very privileged and never experienced homelessness and that I think I appreciate that Launch and CAP have experience in this and I trust that they they know exactly how to handle this, whether, you know, what the front desk looks like. I trust them to handle that. I think as far as what's being proposed here, I think it's a beautiful building. I was really impressed with, you know, what it looks like. As far as it, I love that there's a lounge space. Is there going to be any programming? And I'm not sure if this is a question for you or maybe Cory, but will there be programming? What does that look like? And that's maybe more out of just curiosity.
I'm going to let Cory comment about programming and what they do. Let me comment about the building. Almost four years ago now, when we start first started talking about this and we talked with our board, one of the absolutes that came out of our board discussion was they were not interested in going buying an old building in town and converting it. They said two reasons they didn't want to do that. One is that would be taking affordable housing out of the market and they didn't think that was the right role. And secondly, there's a message. When you are coming out of homelessness and you're going into, I think, which will be a very nice building. And that's a message that our board felt strongly they wanted to convey. I'm, I expect a year and a half from now, you, we will hear some complaints that the building is too nice. And if that happens, we will have accomplished our goal.
Who would complain that?
Somebody, somebody might say, why are we providing this nice a housing for people that have been homeless?
You can send them to me, I will have a chat.
And then secondly, the kind of services, I'll let Cory comment on that, the services that they provide.
Yeah, I think, thanks for that question. I think we don't, we haven't laid out specifically as far as what kinds of groups and activities and things will happen there. We certainly have done a whole host of of those kinds of things from our Adulting 2.0 classes, which are educational pieces about all sorts of life skills, to kind of recovery groups, to just general kind of support groups. The big part of our values are really related to youth driving the kind of the services. And so until we have youth that are living in the facility and can engage with them as to what specific needs and resources they they want to take advantage of, we probably won't have like a clear plan for groups and things. But you you can anticipate some kinds of support groups, some kinds of fun, social kinds of things, like dinners and barbecues and those kinds of things. And those things of that nature, but we'll probably have specifics until we meet those specific youth and see what they would be interested in engaging with.
Thank you.
Just to echo off customer half field's comment about the look, I I agree. I like the look of the building and I like the fact that it looks like a residential, the rough line. The only one, the one thing I do when I just purely look at structure and setup and layout is that the one thing that I I'll draw caution to, I guess, or concern is the patio, if the patio, if you pull it up, Liz, the patio picture of the bump out faces the street, right? If I looked at that correctly? And and so the only concern I have with that, I guess there's there's some screening. I don't know if that's bushes, if that's trees. My, I'll just say my experience from any apartment or shared space, that becomes a shared space and with that usually results in no one necessarily taking ownership of how that shared space looks. So sometimes I worry about, I I'll say this, I do, I don't sometimes. In this case, I worry about that being on the visible side of the street. Not that like, and that's true for any apartment complex, just because it's a shared space. I leave my trash there because it's not my space, someone else pick up after me because it's a little bit of that, just in general. So I don't know how the screening, I just, like I said, just as a pure design piece, that's my commentary on that with that facing the north. Now, the barbecue space or the pit space, that's kind of that other side. That is obviously more hidden and kind of away from the street. But just that patio space kind of on that front street side, I guess I'll just say that was my only observation or concern. Of course, now if you put tall trees there and it's screened, it's privacy for the people using the space as well as kind of that. But shared spaces tend to look shared.
Well, first of all, I can assure you wherever it is, it's going to be maintained. That it's, it's just part of the what we have to maintain a nice building. Where it gets located, as if you you remember seeing the 3D images of the building, there's an enclosed patio space and then there's a out kind of a garden patio. You don't see it on this site plan. We've actually got a more detailed site plan that's coming back now to you is our preliminary building and site plan approval. That patio area is in the front, you're right. We looked at putting it in the, on the other side. First, we need to have it next to our enclosed patio that's in the building. It's also, we want it close enough that it can be monitored. If we shift it to the other side, now we have to move the building and it gets too close to the street and the utilities are out there. There's a, I think we're at a 30 foot setback. Quite frankly, that's not the limiting thing is the 30 feet. What's limiting is this 24 inch stormwater pipe that runs out there that we can't move any further to the to the northeast on. Also, if we, we can't move the parking lot any further to the west because of, well, again, there's another pipe and we need to get this stormwater pond in there. So there was really a a lot of discussion. We also concluded that it was not a good idea, was not a very residential feel if it was street parking building. Okay, so we put the building or the parking behind again to kind of create more of a, get away from the institutional design of the building. And so the compromise then was our outdoor space needed to be in the front yard.
Yeah, I I think that's, that makes sense to me. I just, like I said, I just, that's my only question. And even for the people using the space, because it's going to be a very visible space around the corner.
Same picture.
Yeah?
I mean, if that's the screening or something.
Well, I think that's gardens. I don't think those are trees.
There's three trees. What is it?
That's my concern. Those are more, because if you look at.
They're hedges.
Hedges, okay.
You know?
Well, there's hedges, it looks like there's three trees there, right? Three oversize.
So, yeah, that's my commentary.
But again, when we come back, we're, we can show that a little more detail. I understand what you're saying.
I think it goes both ways. It's people driving, it's the people using the space.
Yeah.
Like if you're having people and you're hanging out there, everyone drives by and sees you sitting there hanging out there, right? So, you know, but yeah, for a concept, that's fine. You know, preliminary, I'd just be curious to see a little bit more.
Well, I think it should be more in this concept. So we have an idea that changes want to be made now comes a preliminary, we don't like it.
I mean, this says on that front part, it's covered porch. I I would think if there's a staff person, I'm not that concerned. There's certainly other, I mean, even off of Crosstown recently, those, a couple apartment buildings, they have a very visible gathering space, they just improved that. I think people are aware of that and the front being just a covered porch sounds more like just a couple of seats and the patio is more to the rear. So I would think if there's staffing and stuff, not as much of a concern.
So so we're talking two different things, a patio and a covered area?
That's what I'm understanding is that there's.
Where's the patio?
The covered patio is to the back and the front is more labeled on the plans as a, as a covered porch or a porch.
If you, so, yeah, there. If you look at the. See, that's where the confusion is. I was assuming those were.
If I'm saying it correctly, I'm.
Yeah, if you go to the 3D image.
So this is the street here.
So you can see there's a.
Yeah.
Covered porch area, this building.
Is there.
So porch.
Is flipped now.
Yeah, because it's the parking lot.
Right, so the, again, you're you're seeing our concept plan as we've revised the plan. We flipped the building around so our entrance is on the, towards the channel. And the landscape plan that you saw was our revised one. But there is a covered porch area and then towards Hickory Street of that is an outdoor patio.
Okay, so the patio is by Hickory.
And that's a non-covered patio.
And that's the bump out on that picture.
Exactly, that's the bump out.
And that is facing the street.
That's exactly right.
Okay, thank you.
Because where's the bump out here? Go back to the picture.
This is the covered vestibule area.
Okay.
So.
And then where's it?
This area, right here.
I had a reverse.
And then where's the patio?
The patio would be right here.
Yeah, so would that be that?
So it would be toward the street, okay.
So there's a patio off the covered area? Exactly.
Right here.
It's challenging when you can't see what we're talking about.
So in the artist rendering, go back, the the top one is actually backwards because we're actually, so it's actually, because if you're actually, if the parking lot is this side, the we're actually looking at from the street side, not the parking lot side. So the parking lot should be in the other side of the building.
Yeah, just cover up the parking lot.
Exactly, I mean, that's why it's misleading.
Yep.
Just appreciate, you're seeing a little bit like our landscape plan is from our preliminary building plans at the staff scene. So we're trying to share with you kind of what's coming. But that landscape plan, so it's part of the concept plan, we we don't submit a detailed landscape plan.
Agreed.
But our detailed landscape plan, one of the comments and an appropriate comment and as Liz mentioned in her presentation is common open space, usable open space. So we've been looking at, okay, for this kind of building, what's appropriate common open space? So it's not a playground apparatus, right? But it's a gathering space. And so that's where we evolved to this outdoor patio. And you'll see there's some other things that are coming. But so place, what we're seeing, outdoor space for our tenants is places they can go and sit and potentially have a group setting. I mean, that's could well be why we're going to have either the covered patio, a covered porch or the outdoor patio. There'll be some areas by the pond, that'll be for that type of thing. But again, we're not having a place to have a jungle gym.
This may be more of a question for staff, I'm not sure. So with, since it went through concept again, were the neighbors notified again?
Yes, they were.
Okay, because one of the original concerns, which I wasn't that concerned about, but was traffic on Hickory. And I think that this, I mean, is will be even less traffic. So not as much, and I assume that's probably why we didn't hear from any neighbors this time, so that's good.
So I did have a couple of questions. I think these are probably more from the program side for like Cory, for example. So two of the questions, like one of them was for this particular program to be, for the residents to be in this program, they have to also be drug tested or they have to be like free of alcohol? Or is it one of those things where that's not a criteria for their living here?
They all have to go through a selection process.
Yep.
Did they, I'll let Cory comment about the tenants that are and what the selection process will be. But it will be similar to what they're using today for their clients that get placed in the program.
Yeah, so there will not be a requirement for drug testing or anything like that. Part of what we need to think about is this in terms of being a, an apartment in the community where where youth are signing a lease. And so if these same youth entered the same program, but did our scattered site program, for example, and got Townhouse at Carver Ridge, you you would not expect drug testing for for entering into an apartment lease anywhere else in the city. And so those same kind of criteria, you want to think of this in terms of this is a home where they are living. Now, that said, if there then becomes issues with with alcohol or drugs and that begins to affect their housing, that's when we begin to to step in and require them to address the the issue that's that's causing problems that could cause them to lose their house. And so just like any other, you know, apartment in the the community, there are, you know, no drugs on the premises. And if there are police calls related to drugs, then that can be grounds for eviction. So all of those kinds of things are in place. And and so we we make our clients very well aware of what those those requirements are. And then if there becomes an issue, then we start talking about what their options are to to address that, be it treatment or or perhaps, you know, eventually losing their house.
Okay, and the.
If somebody comes into our building and has been in a counseling program, maybe they had been, let's say, they they were in alcohol treatment, they were in AA. And if that's what they've been doing, that will be one of the requirements of the case managers is that they stay active in it. And if they fail to, that'll be a violation of the lease. So that's going to be different, that you wouldn't find that in many apartments. Actually, our foundation owns the building where Launches today and we have two apartments. Last summer, we had a tenant that we evicted because they weren't complying with Launch Ministry's case management requirements. And so it it will be more restrictive than most apartments from that standpoint. But it could be other things that they weren't in compliance with.
Sure, okay. The other question I had was that earlier you mentioned something about like, about, you know, being not necessarily, hopefully, the goal is to not need these, you know, 19 units in 30 years because there wouldn't be any, you know, any need for home for this type in our community. But would the, is this, would it, would there be mechanisms to make sure that this serve people who are residents or who, this was, this community was their home first over like, let's say, someone saying that, hey, you know what? I know I live in Eagan, but this is the, this is the only place I could find that was open, for example, right? You know, that's.
So first criteria in order to be a resident, you need to be on the Carver, Carver, Scott County, what's called the coordinated entry list. That goes through the Carver County Social Services. They have a full time person that manages homeless people. So you have to be on that list and that requires you to do some things. If that was the sole basis, we'd have more tenants than we would have spaces for. So then there's the next criteria of have you been a, historically a resident of of the county? Have you worked in the county? So there's another set of criteria. If, well, if it got to the point where there weren't any homeless people in Carver County or Scott County that met the criteria, I suppose, yes, then there could be people coming from. But it would be unusual that somebody could go through that selection criteria and we'd say, well, we don't have enough to meet these criteria, so we're picking somebody else. Now, long term, one of, as part of the financing, if if we agree, well, if at the end of 30 years, we agree to keep it as an affordable apartment building, the loan becomes a grant. So for 30 years, the interest rate is zero and the monthly payments, the principal payments are zero. And if then to 30 years, it's a grant. So I can assure you, I probably won't be here 30 years from now, but I can imagine they won't exercise that option and keep it affordable. And so it could evolve to be if we ran out of homeless youth, we met those kind of criteria, it could be another affordable apartment building. So.
Say, this is Bob in Monso here. And if I could just, just in response to some of the design questions around to some of the outdoor spaces, the outdoor patio and some of that, I think, you know, for any of us that are familiar with Launch and their approach and their counseling work with people that would be residents here, I mean, they really work to build, you know, some. work to build, you know, a sense of togetherness, a sense of community amongst those individuals, amongst those people. And I think some of the spaces here are designed in a way to do, and then preparing them to, with our, Cory talked about the adulting programs they have, and then working with them to, to be part of the broader community, to move out of this space and be able to move into the broader community and be part of that community. So it's building community within, you know, the goal is to build community within this facility, and prepare them and, and to be able to move into and be part of a, a healthy member, contributing member, a positive member of the broader community. So that sense of community, I think, is, underscores both the design and what we wanted to accomplish with the building, also prepare these folks as it relates to the broader community they're gonna be eventually hired on.
This seems like a really unique look at homelessness and changing people's perspective on homelessness and giving them a night, we kind of talked about earlier, like, who would say that this is too nice of a building? I think, to me, this seems like an opportunity, if we all keep our promises, to have that shift of what homelessness looks like, and moving out of homelessness. I don't think this is being done a lot of places, so I think that's exciting to say, look, there are ways to get people off the streets and in homes, and that, and that universal right of being sheltered, or what should be. And I think this, you know, like I said, if it is what you're presenting here, and I trust it is, that, that this can help shift perspective and say, homeless people deserve everything, we all do, because we're all just people. So, I think that's really exciting about this project, is that it's not something I'm seeing everywhere, it's not just popping up little ice houses, and, you know, that's the best some people can do at that point, but I think this is, it's exciting that it's a nice building, and that there's support, and that, yeah, that conversation about what can sometimes be an invisible problem of homelessness is, is being addressed in a really unique way, so.
Well, I can tell you, we're committed to it to be a quality place long-term. To accomplish that, one of the things that we, it'll be set up where it's run by a board of directors that are local people, and they will be making those kind of decisions. The, and we think that's important. One of the interesting things to me is that as we went out and raised, asked people to donate $10,000 to sponsor a room, one of the things we asked them to do was to be involved in furnishing it. And with the idea that if a youth lived there for nine months and was choosing to move out, they would have furnishings to move to their next place. So that's kind of our commitment as, as sponsors, that we would then refurnish it if they need it. Some, some people come in, they don't need it, but majority will need the simple things, dishes, pots and pans, a nice bed to sleep in. And that's our commitment, is that they're gonna come in there and have that, and when they leave, they can take it.
Just a point of information, I think, through Minnesota Housing Finance, which provided, you know, significant grants supporting this project, I think this was the only project of its type to be funded in the so-called suburban area. And I believe that says a lot about the project, the proposal itself, so hopefully that's being communicated, you know, tonight, and in terms of the commitment to the long-term quality and delivery of services that are gonna, the outcome's gonna be successful, both individually for the individuals and for the, the community as a whole.
So, as I'm kind of, sorry, heard an echo, so as I'm kind of looking at this, I'm kind of looking at it from three different perspectives. First is from the, those are the clients there, and this is certainly a, you know, an opportunity to address a lot of the, at least for at least 19 at a time, right?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, eighteen, sorry, eighteen, because someone actually works there, right? For eighteen, for eighteen young adults to, you know, help address that homeless situation, but be able to transition them to something, to help them on, on their journey, to move them up into something better. So I think this is a really important thing, that's certainly well-needed within Carver County, because, you know, it's, I think the numbers, you know, year after year, it's like, it's, you know, hovering around 100 or so, and, you know, it goes up and down, but overall, there's this chronic need that is unaddressed in our community. On the other side of it, you know, I'm also looking at from the lens of, you know, the homeowners and residents, because, you know, one of the things that comes to them from the top of mind is that I don't want my property values to be impacted, right? I mean, you look at all the complaints, whether it's traffic noise, what you see, it all boils down to, is my, are my property values going to be affected, right? Or is my quality of life gonna be affected? And it sounds like, you know, you're taking proactive steps to really to, you know, to really help provide guidance, but also make sure that you're responsible as neighbors too, and that's, that's what I'm hearing. So, you know, from that perspective, it seems like there's no one here from the neighborhood that's, you know, come by here, it doesn't sound like there's a lot of opposition per se around that, certainly not from the traffic perspective, and this is better from what, from the other one regarding traffic. Then the other last one is also this systemic, this systemic integration within the community, because, you know, the, the, the individuals who will live there will also need to get other places. So there's housing, there's transportation, and then there's jobs. And we don't know necessarily where the jobs will be for these individuals, they might be locally, it might be someplace, I mean, I can't imagine they'd be, you know, really, really far away, but they'll still need transportation. So between the jobs, transportation, and housing, there's this sort of system that needs to be interconnected, and that fabric of theirs, you know, you know, it sounds like Southwest Prime as a microtransit service will be their lifeline, you know, certainly Monday through Saturdays, of getting around. And it's one of those things I think, and as I think through it, it just kind of brings about the importance of, if any one of those pieces of the system failed, then the systems failed for those individuals, and that's gonna be a problem, which means that, you know, as a community, we need to make sure that, you know, we're supporting, you know, businesses to provide jobs, transportation services, and, and organizations like Southwest Transit, and we have, but, you know, Southwest Transit's been the backbone for a lot of, of the transportation, because if they're stranded, it doesn't really do any good for them either. And then, of course, housing, to make sure they have a place to, to call home, because ultimately, you can't get back on your feet if you don't have shelter. I mean, we talk about, you know, if you talk about like wilderness survival, they say, you know, the, the three things that you need to survive are you need shelter, food, and water, right? And ultimately, the first thing you say is establish shelter, because night's gonna come, and if you're hungry, you'll, you'll still at least have a place where you're not gonna get rained on, you're not gonna be, you know, cold, right? It's, that's a fundamental piece of it. So, you know, having all those pieces in place are really, really critical. So, as a community, being able to deliver on that and sustain that's really important. So it's, this is, having this here is an investment in those individuals, but that also reinforces the need for us to make sure we continue to support our investment in those other areas, so that way our businesses are, are successful, and transportation's there, so that way this continues to be successful as well.
Well, I agree, a hundred percent, it's been one of the reasons we've stayed focused on, because we think that it's, this can only accomplish if it's a partnership. You know, I haven't talked about our other partners, but if Carver County Social Services staff were here, they would say this is one of their number-one priorities, they've been involved since the very first discussions. One of our other significant partners is the Carver County CDA, to the point where they're funding $750,000 of the project. They will be a long-term involvement cap agency. If there was, to us, there was no other group that we wanted to be the manager, other than the cap agency. They are our social service provider, they are managing these types of projects, and they have a relationship with our other key partner, which is Launch Ministries. You know, so we have in the, this area, strong support services, we just don't have housing. And so we have, we're, Launch Social Services today are housing a number of young adults, so they're not out there in the call, but that we have a network. So one of the reasons, very early on, our foundation said, okay, if we're gonna be successful with this project, we have to make sure that Launch is successful. And so we stepped forward, bought the building where they're at, and they are our tenant in that building on Second Street. That building and that drop-in facility will stay and be operational, serving other people in addition to our tenants. So I agree with you a hundred percent, this is, you just can't go and build a building, that's not the solution. And actually, the state fully understands this. I could tell you, in our discussions with the state, we've spent a lot more time talking about operations than we have the design of the building. And I think as, you're probably aware, we originally applied for funding four years ago, we weren't successful, and one of the comments was, you need to figure out 24-hour staffing. So the state stepped up, even without us asking for it, and said, we like your project, here's another $2.6 million to cover those operating expenses. So it is a partnership, and, and that's the way we've tried to approach it all along. And by the way, we are, we're open to having people volunteer to spend a night being the house, houseperson. I've been thinking about hiring Mary Stapleton for a couple nights a week, and Bob Repke's volunteered to sleep overnight, one night a month.
Why would you need that? There's a living. Why would you need that? There's a living.
You know, just to your, to your point about what you're raising, the issue about, you know, market values and, and personal safety and some of that, you know, since we began talking about this project, you know, we've always felt it aligned to the values of the community, and we've talked about value, the human worth and dignity of every person. And even more so as it relates to your goal to build an inclusive community. We really believe that, you know, this is a project that stands in support, you know, those values and, and that kind of goal. And, and, you know, that excites us, and, and we believe it aligns to the kind of community you're, you're looking to create. We hope you believe that also, and we're excited, we're excited for this project, and especially for the support we've seen in the community, and the support that we receive from the funders. So, it's been pretty rewarding.
I got a couple of questions. I think I know the answer, but I want to make sure that that is the correct answer. So, when this plan was first done, and the, the market rate apartments was gonna help, help fund the project, it's gonna help make the project be better, and now that was now removed, what changed to make this project now sustainable?
So, I, from a funding standpoint, back three years ago, when we had two buildings, the 26-unit building wasn't contributing dollars towards this project. What it was doing, though, is that the site, our, the 18, at that time, the 16-unit building was taking up half the site, and the 26 was the other half of the site. Once it was determined that it just wasn't economically viable for the second building, it didn't change the economics of the, it's now the 19-unit building, because the site is being donated. And the commitment was that it would be donated whatever site we needed, and now, since it's all used by the 19-unit building, the whole site's being donated. So it hasn't changed that-
So there's no site cost?
No.
But somewhere, there was something that showed there were site costs?
Could be, we, if you look at our, what we submit to the state, I think we showed site, I'm, I'm going back on, thinking, I think it was $220,000 as a expenditure, but then it shows $220,000 as a donation on revenues. So, no, but we were never spending money on buying the site, it was always being donated.
Okay, I think there's some confusion on that, too. All right. The other thing I'm concerned about is parking. It says in the written part that there's 22 places, some of the prints I looked at only show 20. And I'm concerned because the 16 is almost half of what's required. I get it, but what happens if everyone has a car? And what happens when people come there? What I don't want to see is parking in a residential area, or, I don't, well, we don't know what's gonna happen with the bus facility in the future, but it's already stated somewhere in there that there'll be no parking on Hickory Street, so that just means it'll filter out. And, and, I mean, one or two places, but half of the parking scares me a little bit, and then it goes back to, what if things change, and there isn't that parking available? And so that, that's bothersome for me.
So what, first, as we've, I answer this in a couple of ways. One, this will, long-term, be owned by this local nonprofit. Guaranteed it'll be owned for the next 30 years, and probably long past that. Secondly, as we've talked to the other two similar facilities, they actually built for half a stall per unit, and they're not experiencing issues. So we're having more parking than those other two. And then lastly, if, we are prepared to say, if, we'll include it in the lease, so we'll manage number of cars in the lease. And so we won't, you know, we're not going to have people come in, we have two cars, obviously, these are gonna be efficiency units for one person. If we're starting for something changes, and all of a sudden, now we have 18, well, make it different, we have 16 homeless, have been homeless individuals, they all have cars, we have two vacant units, we, and we're gonna have a parking issue, we can put a condition in the lease that that person doesn't have a vehicle. I think the chances of that happening are very slim, but it could be 30 years, 32 years from now, it shifts and becomes an affordable apartment, and we'll have to have those conditions. Because I fully expect, and we've had this discussion with the staff, that's gonna be one of the conditions, that there can be no more than one car per, per unit in the building.
Clarifying question that kind of levers off your question, those are the two sites you mentioned, do they serve the same population?
Yes.
Okay. Because I think, if I'm reading a little bit of your concern, as if, you know, I, I agree, I don't think we're gonna solve homelessness in Carver County, and if we do, we can all feel good about that, that's, that'd be good. But I think the question the mayor's hinting a little bit is that if, if a different market, you know, maybe the young adult isn't the market that needs to be served, and there's a change made, your board makes a change to say, we're gonna serve, you know, families, now you're gonna have to probably do some reconstruction inside, maybe combine units, right, with studios? But it could happen. I think that's where it comes up, is now, now all of a sudden, you may have, you know, because I do think there is a stigma to say that you could, if you're homeless, you don't have anything. Well, that's not true, you may have a car, you may be working.
Absolutely.
Right? And, and in this case, you should be, you know, that's part of the condition. So, I, I hear what the mayor's saying on that, because that is a possibility that, you know, I do say, I think you're probably right, that this market that you're serving now is less likely to have a car at this point in their life. But I do worry, you know, echo that a little bit of worrying, and I understand, you're not gonna fit to like a normal apartment.
But you're, you're right from the standpoint of, again, we're, I'm just looking around, maybe a couple people that maybe 30 years from now will still be here.
I hope to be.
But, yeah, some of us won't. But if, if it was to change, and we didn't have a need for 18 efficiency units, and you have an apartment building that has no debt, because it'll have no debt 30 years from now, and you convert it to nine one-bedroom units- from now, and you convert it to nine one-bedroom units, because that's the conversion you'd have to make, now you're going to, by ordinance, you have to have 18 parking spaces. We'll have more than enough parking. So, again, I think that's highly unlikely what's, what's going to happen, but if we get to that point where we no longer have a need for serving homeless youth, or very low-income, single youth, and converting it to one-bedroom units, that means it's going to be nine. Actually, be nine plus one, right? Plus one managers, the owner, whatever. Or it could be one two-bedroom. Yeah, again, we're, so, will it have enough parking? It would be much like today if you took in an existing apartment complex, and the market changed, and they said, you know what, we don't, we have too many two-bedrooms, we want to change it and make those two bedrooms efficiencies. They'd come into the city to get a building permit, and the city staff would say, can't do that, you don't have enough parking. Right? And that's the, it's by unit. So.
But why do we show 38, and you only got 20?
Because we have 18, actually 19, efficiency units that are designed for one person.
So why are we recommending 38?
Well, I think the, the way the building is laid out right now and the use of it could be very.
Could be what?
The use of it being only a single occupancy type units can be very specific in the zoning. So if there was a change to that, we would have a site planning process that would have to be undertaken for us to evaluate the parking need out there. But I think with the, the type of building, and it being single occupancy type units, and the leasing, limiting one vehicle per unit, and only one staff person on site, we, we felt comfortable with what's being proposed from a parking standpoint.
But they're also going to hold meetings there, and then staff will come, be, will be, have additional cars there. And, and I don't know if the family comes and meets, if there's any opportunities for that. That's what I look at. I don't look at every day. I look at those other times when you have things like that, that you have to deal with. And to me, we're just too many places off. One or two, maybe even five, I wouldn't, 16 is a long ways of what it says recommended for this building, and that, that's a big concern. Parkings are a number-one issue. Every time we have something, it's parking.
Are there other examples where, based on what the building was, we didn't go with the, our ordinance parking?
Oh, yeah, we have. But I don't know if it's.
I mean, I don't think people are going and, I, you're not having your whole family over to a studio apartment. Studio apartments, they're not very big. I barely have my whole family over to my house, it's 1,200 square feet. So I don't, I, I mean, I think there could be more parking. I see like, yeah, if there's volunteers, you know, coming and things like that, a few more spots would be maybe good, but I don't know, there's a ton of like family and things coming to visit.
So rather than basing on supposition for preliminary, could we base this on real data and some peak data? Because I think that would be helpful to understand. So for like, since there's existing facilities to compare against, that are single occupancy, similar model, you know, bringing that data back and then making sure that the parking aligns to that from both, you know, from a, both a peak, and at peak parking, for example, if there is an event and there is like, you know, overflow, where do those individuals park? Right? Because I think that we just need to understand what, what that means. And versus like your, your peak normal times, right? What does the parking actually look like in those other facilities in terms of how many spaces are actually consumed? And how many are actually available?
We can request more information on that for the next round here.
Because there's just nowhere, I mean, I, I understand, right? I mean, again, no one, I'd much better see a big, nice, beautiful building than a piece of asphalt. But the reality is, in that space, too, is if it overflows, there's nowhere for that traffic, that parking to go. You know, there's, you're not going to get a complaining, I mean, it's going to be on Hickory. That's the only place it could go.
Well, I think.
And that road is not fun to navigate regardless, if there's, if not now, let alone. So, again, as a concept, I guess I'll just say, I'm not, you know, mayor, you can have your opinion that you have, which is, is fair. I, I would echo that. It would be good to see maybe a good effort in the preliminary to try to see if you can add some to that. You know, but again, I, I know, it doesn't, it, it's probably not a big enough space to add 16. But like I said, I, I do echo that concern a little bit, just because that is, there's just nowhere else for the parking to go if something that needs, is needed. So, you know, am I expecting to see 38 in a preliminary? No. Would I like to see a couple more? Sure.
There's a couple of ways that, that this could be looked at. One would be looking at the other facilities and sort of what, what they're seeing for peak times of program. The other part of it is looking at, is there the opportunity for proof of parking? So we do that in a lot of buildings where we'll look at, okay, if there's an issue that exists on the site that we see with parking that they're not able to accommodate, where would that additional parking be put? And, and making sure that that's something that's, that's studied as part of this preliminary is to look at a, more of a proof of parking. So you, in essence, the concept is build what you need, but if you don't have enough, you have someplace that you've already pre-planned that you can put additional parking.
So my thought around that, I completely agree on the proof parking piece, because I know we've done that for a number of other, a number of other facilities, both commercial and residential. But in order to not lock in this, you know, like whoever the owners are, if, whether community asset or others continue to own this in the future, should the usage change, evaluating the proof parking for a larger usage for occupancy? It's, you know, so make sure that, A, this meets what we need to do for, for now, for the proof parking, but then also look at sort of like the extended ones. So in case that the usage changes and say, you know, maybe you do need to have more vehicles there because of the use that's a higher vehicular usage rate, then where would those go? So if they do do like an interior model, it does change the use, how much could they get to?
To me, the bigger issue is the future and not now.
Right.
I mean, because I do, I do think it makes sense as far as how many parking stalls you'd actually build based on sort of the model that they're building out. To me, where, where it becomes the issue is if you did see that convert truly into an apartment building, where we say, okay, we don't have this issue that, that we need to address in the community anymore, or the nonprofit goes away, and they decide that they want to sell their assets, and it becomes an apartment building, where do you accommodate that, that parking? So to me, what I hear you guys saying is look at where that additional parking could be, not necessarily that you build it, but that in the future, if someday that changed use, that you'd have a place to, to be able to, to accommodate that.
And also with that, I, I want to add one other request, just to, as a diagram illustrative of where any additional parking would, the nearest additional parking would be, because that'll sort of reinforce whether the parking needs to be onsite or could be overflow, because as far as I know.
I think the answer, that's pretty easy.
I think.
I mean, there's, there, there is no parking.
Hickory's no parking.
That's what I thought. Hickory's no parking, which means that Hickory, and then you're down to your Fourth Street, which is kind of a little ways away.
Well, I think the other thing is, you don't want to have the, the projects see that their parking gets pushed into residential areas.
Right, exactly. Yep. So with that, that means that, you know, it's whatever we, whatever happens, has got to stay on that site.
Yeah. Again, I, I don't think that this is an issue for what they're talking about here now. And if, if, you know, if this, you know, existed forever, it probably is an issue that never has to be addressed. But to, to me, the, the issue ends up being, if for some reason this nonprofit didn't exist, and they turn this into a traditional apartment building, I, I think there would be a question about, is there enough parking stalls to, to be able to accommodate, you know, because you could have a studio with, with a couple that's living in there, young professionals or whatever.
Exactly.
So to, to me, it's more that future.
Yep.
Look at if you're going to do it.
And, well, the building may stay, you know, odds are, I mean, most buildings get sold after like, you know, 30 to 50 years, the mortgage is paid off, and then it becomes an asset, but now you have an asset you're sitting on that may be worth more as an investment than it is for something else, right? I mean, that's just the reality of finances, so you might be able to take that money and put it into a new development that, you know, serves a different population, continues to serve a population better, because you're able to take that, that, that capital and leverage it. So that means that it, you know, there's an, this inevitability that someone else will own it, someone else will do something with it, right?
You know, maybe as part of the presentation, I don't agree with Mal, I think it is a longer-term view than, that you're talking about, and, because if Cory was going to talk about what the near term or what they're seeing today and how that projects out, I don't think they, you can speak to this Cory a little bit, but I don't think you've seen the kind of volume in terms of people that are knocking at your door, and in crisis situations as you're seeing today. And I don't think that that is going to go away anytime soon. So.
Well, we can look at proof of parking. You know, the site could accommodate more parking if we want to fill it up with asphalt. And we can, I think that would be a reasonable solution. We would also agree that we'll, you can put a condition that we can put it in our leases. I think it's highly unlikely that in 50 years, it won't be, 50 years from now, this will be some type of affordable, nonprofit-owned or publicly-owned entity. If, in fact, I shared with you all the details of the financing, you would reach that same conclusion. There's just, it would be one of the worst decisions anybody could make to ever sell this, okay? Unless you sold it to another nonprofit or to a government entity that was approved by the state of Minnesota. So, but I think we can look at between now and we come back with, if you want to look where proof of parking could be, we can do that, but I actually think that the management of it is the best way to do it. Just say that we have to manage it so that we don't have every tenant having a car.
To me, it's more just optionality. I mean, you, you want to make sure that, I mean, because.
Just don't want to tie somebody in the future.
I mean, uses change, can change, and when they change in the future, we just don't want it to be something that's blocked in. And I think doing this analysis doesn't mean it has to be built, it, it just means that it has to be thought out.
Okay. And I don't know, maybe I missed this somewhere through the conversation. How does the priority of who gets these first units, how does that work? What's the average stay that someone stays there? I believe that from the last conversation, there is no term. They can stay there as long as they need to stay there. But there must be some numbers from these other facilities that you've looked at. But, but, and then the other kind of feed-off of that question is, with it being CAP Agency in Scott County, does that mean that Scott County will, will facilitate or come over and use this facility as well? Or does it all stay, like you've said, that it'd be Carver County, and do Chaska youth get priority? Is there anything, how, how are you prioritizing what, I don't remember, 47, 61, the number that are out there in the 18?
So, first of all, CAP Agency serves both counties.
Yep.
As the social service.
But does that open up for them?
So, not so much them. The Carver and Scott Social Services maintain what they call the coordinated entry list, and it's a joint list of people who have approached either one of them in needing housing. And so that's the first criteria. You have to have been identified on that list. And, and if you haven't, you have to go and apply, because, again, two-thirds of the residents are going to be getting some type of assistance. Now, the second group of priorities then relate to, have you lived or worked in Carver County, that list that I went through? But will it be people that have historically lived in Scott County, or went to school in Chalkapee, living in this place? Yes. Because people that are going to be living here are homeless. That we're not going to be able to say that today they're living in Watertown, or they're living in Chaska, because, quite frankly, they're homeless, and they're moving around into various places. So the, the, but the priority, the piece that I, we described of how we select, and that piece has been approved by the state as part of the funding. You can see from a state's perspective, they'd like to have no criteria, just wherever it is, wherever you've been living, or wherever you came from, you would be able to live in this. They've agreed to that set of criteria that we laid out earlier. So, but the first criteria is you have to have been through the county's social service process, which the two counties do jointly.
So you, but you still haven't came up with, and this is maybe not your question, it's a Cory question, how do you prioritize who first is, gets the, the new units? How, how do you determine that, based on?
So those people that, first of all, will go to the list, people who are on the coordinated entry list, and then if.
But are they, they're, are they ranked that? That's what I'm trying to say.
Not necessarily, no. They're on the list, and then they have a certain need. And if there are, if there are more than 19 or 18, then we go to the second category of criteria that are in our, again, I'm not going to go through all nine points, but.
If, maybe I can chime in. So Mayor Wintz, the, the priority list is really less of a list and more of a priority pool. And so it's sort of a pool of eligible clients who have, are experiencing homelessness, and then fit into various other criteria. And so when we are ready to start filling units, we approach that, the managers of that priority pool, and we say, these are our criteria for who we need in, in these units. So we're going to need 13 people who fit this housing support, you know, criteria, having been homeless for at least a year, having, you know, whatever, the other qualifications to go with that. And those 13 people, we are prioritizing a connection to Carver County, and live in, worked, went to school, those, those kinds of things. And so they will look in that pool, and they'll find us, the 13 most eligible people that fit those criteria, and they'll send them to us, and then we'll start our screening and application process. If some are ineligible or don't want to enter the program, then we go back to the pool and, and lay out those, those same criteria. And then for the other five units, we, the same thing, we, we lay out our criteria, it doesn't have to have that year of homelessness criteria, but we, we still say we're, we're looking for people who are, you know, living, connected to Carver County, have a employment enough to be able to afford the rent, which is minimal, and so on and so forth. So, so that's all done in the kind of screening process with that pool. Now, is it possible that, that especially right when we, we kind of fill those first 18 units, that there are not 18 eligible people? Possible? It's unlikely, just given the, the current numbers. We currently have 54 people on our emergency shelter waiting list, so there are certainly a lot of youth that are out there needing support. But I think particularly, we think long-term, so youth will be, we have nailed this all down, presumably signing year-long leases initially. And so when, when units come available, you know, there's only going to be one or two units available at a time. And so in those situations, then guaranteed, there will always be a Carver County youth eligible. So I, I think the only time where, where your concern might, we, we might run to, to not having eligible youth is, is that kind of initial first fill-up of those, those 18 units. Even there, I, I don't see it as, as very likely. But then ongoing, you know, with, with one or two units coming at a time, there will always be a Carver County that's, that's ready to fill that spot.
We've also been, this issue of selection, putting these additional criteria, has been a discussion point, at least with the state. And we've been very clear, we have not, again, I, we have six or seven of those additional criteria. We've been very clear that there's not, number one, priority, number two, they all are equal, which will. which will give us more flexibility in how we choose. Those final criteria may well get ranked or prioritized by the local board once we start operation. Um, and I'm sure they won't, they'll change over time. If there are any changes in those, that would have to go back to the state as part of our annual review.
Okay, cause this is kind of what, I remember these from other discussions, that we say that it's for Carver County, but then we say there might not be enough Carver County eligible, then we go to Scott County. And the next thing is really not a Carver County facility like we've been touting. And those are the other concerns that I have.
But can.
Yep. And all I can say, I mean, you're right, there might be a day there are no homeless youth in Carver County.
Can I interject?
Today, there are fifty-four.
Can I interject for just a second? We keep having this discussion about local. We don't have anything right now. And there is, there is homeless youth. Where are we sending our homeless youth right now? What if those other communities were to say, we don't want non-local homeless youth here? What, what message would that send?
I get, I get your.
I like, I like the idea of local.
I get your frustration.
But we have to look at this retrospectively, there's always going to be what we feel like are barriers, right? But let's set those aside and say, we're never gonna, I mean, we'd like to, but we're never gonna fulfill the entire need. But we have to start somewhere. And this is a start that I feel like is exciting and it's important and it's done with dignity and respect. And I'll get a little personal, I have a twenty-two-year-old nephew. He's a law-abiding, well, he's a law-abiding citizen from what I know, and he is wanting to go on his own and he's always wanted that, um, when, you know, he was a youth. Turns eighteen, he's an adult. My nephew's lived in two different, now this is his third, and he's by himself now, and I'll get there, but the two homes he lived in previously with other roommates, friends, he wasn't homeless thankfully, but he lived in poor, poor living conditions, very poor living conditions, just disgusting in my opinion. But he was safe and he was with good people. So it was okay. It was okay. My nephew was okay because he lived with safe people. They may not have always done the great things, but my nephew didn't participate in it, right? Now he gets to live on his own because he worked hard and he was able to save enough money and get promotions at his, you know, fast food job because that's the income that he makes to be able to afford a very small, little apartment in a rural community way west of here, okay? It's not the metro, it's not metro pricing, right? We're talking Wilmer. And it's all I could ever want for him. I want to be able to provide, I'm excited to help, I, I didn't have any hand in this. I'm excited to sit here and provide an opportunity for eighteen individuals to be able to live somewhere that's clean, somewhere that's safe, and somewhere that they can have dignity. And I understand that you're fearful of crime and cost of, um, property values, but I will tell you that I had a sister that lived in a market rate apartment who was not doing great things and not being very good. And that, you know, was, was what it was. So it didn't matter whether it was marked homeless or not homeless. So I, I don't mean to be passionate, but I, I just, I kind of want to set the tone here that I understand that we really want to provide Chaska youth with this great opportunity, but we have to also look at, how do we just start? How do we start and then how do we continue to move forward?
My, the reason I'm questioning this because one time I hear it's for Carver County, then I hear it's for anybody. What is it? If it's for everybody, then say it's for everybody.
I understand that, but.
That's where my.
When you have somebody that's in a system.
It's not only this one, it was other times.
It's hard to provide services for that person and I've known what it's like to be on the other side of the coin and have to find an open bed somewhere for somebody.
Although I, I just want to be clear, I think we've said, what I just described, the selection criteria is exactly the same selection criteria that we had four years ago and that we explained. We have not changed that. It's always been that they start off going through Carver and Scott County, the coordinated entry, and then based on that, we get to select priorities and then we have six of them. Uh, we haven't changed any of those since day one. Um, the only thing we have changed since then is now we know that the state has bought off on our full selection criteria. So I think when we were here four years ago, the only thing that I said different was, I can't guarantee you that these extra criteria the state will approve because we're not through the funding process. Today, I can tell you that they have approved those. So the, no, we haven't, we've been very clear all along that the priority will be to, uh, people that are, meet our secondary criteria, um, but there's no guarantees. I mean, if we end up without youth in our communities, Carver County community, uh, that, uh, are, we don't have any homeless youth, uh, we are probably going to still continue to fill that building. And to be completely honest, that would be a good thing.
Couple other things yet I have that I still, uh, again, what was the, and I get, I think it was stated that the age of the residents, are they sixteen and up?
Eighteen to twenty-nine.
So they are, so they're all adults.
Yes.
Okay. One thing that I, I would like to see is, um, just have a, I think, a conversation with our police chief, uh, just to talk about this facility, how it's, how things are going to be run and handled and managed. I think it's important for them to know and understand as we move into the future, as events start happening there, who is, who are the people to contact and all that stuff. But I think it's good to get out in front of it and, and be clear with, uh, PD. I know that there's already a working relationship with everyone, but I don't know if this, there's been a conversation about this facility, especially now that we have a new chief, uh, as well. And I think that, I think that that would be very important to, to make sure that we continue with that.
Would this, just to add to that, would this, I know that our community partner specialist who does happen to be in the room, um, has like a relationship with a lot of, uh, multi-unit facilities. So I would hope that that would be included too, because I know that she's been a tremendous resource to those communities and I think that could just extend and probably be a part of what the mayor just mentioned too, as just like resources. I know a lot of what she does is, um, would probably be beneficial to this place as well.
Yeah, that's, that's something that, um, I think it's a great idea to, to have our police department. I'm sure Ryan would have Julie in that conversation because she does that on a day-to-day basis. But, um, you know, it, it's really about how do we help be a good partner to, to make sure, I mean, cause every, every facility, whether it's market rate or not, is going to have issues. And I mean, Julie, nobody knows that better in the room than Julie. And so, um, you know, we want to be, uh, at the table as part of the, you know, how, how do we address these as they come and how do we end up being a, a advocate for being able to, you know, if there are, uh, problem tenants like there is in any facility in the community, that we can be a resource to help, uh, you know, address the issue.
Yeah, I think, um, I, I, I think what you're, you're saying is fantastic. I think, um, so much of, of our population has such a distrustful relationship with law enforcement and Officer Julie has done such a great job of trying to, um, bridge those gaps and, um, build trust with our youth and, um, and, um, I think it's, yeah, that, that is certainly something that we would intend to do would be, um, with or without your recommendation, would be to, uh, make sure that we have a, a very clear understanding with, um, Chaska PD as to, um, who to call, uh, both in conversation with cap agency as, as the property managers, as well as us as the, um, kind of the onsite people who are there all the time to, um, really get to the point where hopefully we can avoid, uh, police calls, but also that be proactive and, and making sure that we have great communications and very clear, um, understanding of, of how that all works. So, yep, fully on board with that.
Yeah. Just as a little bit of background, we began this process as, it really was started from the community discussions that the police chief back at the time organized about homelessness. And so the, that, the impetus really came from that and then spread to the group and then, okay, well, how are we going to deal with it? And it came up building a building. So, um, uh, I don't know that Ryan's been as involved in the last year and a half as the previous police chief was because it was the pre-planning stuff, but we're absolutely, we want them to be a partner. Um, I agree with Matt completely. These are things that we want to do an excellent job, not just an average job, and that requires partnerships.
Okay, the last.
To that point, that means spending time with the police department, with Julie, with Ryan, I mean, with Marshall and the community center. I mean, whatever, um, can bring value from partnership to stabilize and prepare these folks that are residents of this facility to move out into the community are things we would want to do and have discussions about. So I think there's, you know, different aspects to the partnerships in terms of what services or support might be offered or provided. And boy, we want to explore all of them.
My, my last question is about the, the city parcel now, and again, maybe I missed it, how much are, is all the city parcel gone?
No, um, I, I think, I think there's a smaller piece of it now in the preliminary than there was before.
Dave said something about it wasn't as much and I, but yet the drawing shows the whole parcel.
The concept plan does, the preliminary is different.
Okay, so.
There is a piece of it.
Now, is that, are we donating that then?
Well, I mean, the.
For this project, or how's that working?
I mean, that's going to be a decision up to the, the council on, on how to do this. And we're going to be bringing back sort of the, uh, overall, uh, if you remember back in the beginning, as we, we have an affordable housing TIF policy. And so we have to put together an agreement, uh, for how we address that. Um, our typical way of moving through with, uh, developments like this is if there's a city parcel, a portion of the city parcel that's needed, that needs to be purchased, um, as part of that. But that will be a decision point that the council will have at that point of whether that's a purchase or whether we see that as a contribution to the project. But that's something we'll bring back as part of that whole TIF discussion.
Well, if they're fully funded, do they need the TIF?
That's, I mean, that's, well, the, the tax increment that we, we provided them with our affordable housing TIF policy. And so that was part of our support letter that we put into, into the state. So I'm assuming when Dave's talking about being fully funded, he's including those dollars. It's my, my assumption.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so, all right.
Yeah, so I.
To me, I hear fully funded, thinking, why are we doing TIF?
Yeah, the.
I, I just want to be clear on this stuff.
Yeah, no, that.
Cause it's great to me.
Yeah. Nope, that, as part of the letter of support that we provide, actually in two grant letters, we said that we provide our policy. Now, I think there's a question that they're going to be coming, that they've asked about, you know, can we deviate from our policy, which to me is a different question. And so, um, you know, that's.
That's in the preliminary?
Well, that will be part of an EDA discussion. So that's, that's not part of the planning process, that's part of our economic development process.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Questions? Follow-ups? What's your thought?
I'll put a motion on the floor. Um, I gotta find it though.
Just Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash ninety-six.
So I, yeah, so, um.
You just put a motion, I'll put the.
Okay.
I'll put the.
Motion.
Second.
Made by me.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Hubbard, second by, um, Councilmember Hatfield, adopting Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash ninety-six, again, approving concept plan for West Creek Apartments, Community Asset Group. Um, and I'm sure that our conversations in here will be included in on that. So further discussion.
Again, I'll just say I appreciate your time, effort, uh, you know, I echo, you know, thank you for sharing your feelings, uh, Councilmember Hubbard. Again, I, this has been a process for everyone and I am glad to see it back here and I know it's interesting to come back with a concept plan, but I appreciate that because I do think the plan changed enough where, I appreciate the fact that we, we looking back at a concept plan, but, um, I just appreciate a lot of the time, effort and, you know, Cory, I, I always appreciate you on the call because I think, again, I echo Councilmember Hatfield's things, where I'm not an expert on, on this at all, so I, I lean to the people who, who have a passion and understand and, and, and you've been great to answer some of those great questions for us. I just appreciate your time tonight as well.
Yeah, but also thank you for, you know, for coming back. You know, I think that, you know, this discussions like these are really good and healthy because especially when time elapses, right? And, you know, things do change, we want to make sure that we're all on the same page in terms of what we're, we're saying yes to. So it's important to make sure that, you know, we all have alignment, um, because it's important that, you know, that, you know, like, for example, a letter of support, right? Um, you know, in order to have something like that, if we need another letter or there's something else that comes later, it's much easier when we're already on the same page, right? When we have the, when we have the information that's consistent, accurate, and we know what to expect. So thank you very much for spending the time with us.
Yeah, I'll just comment, um, I wasn't around for the first round, um, and I was only, I think it was just a letter of support that I think when I was on the council.
We did a letter of support, would have been not this last June, it was the June before.
Yeah, because it's been two legislative cycles.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just excited to see this come forward. Um, I, I, I'm excited because, I mean, not just the, the idea of it I'm excited about, but also it just seems very well thought out and like, um, other council members have kind of, um, mentioned that there are, there are some really great support groups that are behind this and it's just very nicely thought out. I think my only hold, my only hesitation was the parking, but that had been adequately addressed, um, and everything. Otherwise, uh, I, it, it just, um, this is exciting to me personally, so.
Okay, anything else? Last call.
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same side. Question carries. All right, thanks everyone. Well, Mary, you weren't going to talk, were you?
How many hours do we have?
Well, thanks, have a good night.
We want to go home tonight.
All right, moves us on to bills. Anyone got a question on a bill?
Uh, just one. Um, question was page seventeen, there's one for governmentjobs.com. Um, there's this, it says subscription for ins, is this insurance or something?
No, 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 it's insights, it's part of our NeoGov system. So NeoGov is our job, uh, application software that processes, uh, going through applications. So this is a subscription to that service for that year to be able to, basically it sorts through applications and pulls out, pulls out candidates that aren't, meet qualification, don't meet qualification. So it's a tool we use to help get through applications.
It's an application management tool.
Yeah.
Right, no, got it.
Yep.
Got it, that's all I've got.
Motion paid to bills.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Grah to pay the bills discussion.
Bring none, Nate, we co-roll.
Councilmember Hatfield.
Yes.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Yes.
Councilmember Wong.
Aye.
Councilmember Grah.
Aye.
Mayor Winchell.
Yes. All right, moves us to other business. Uh, Councilmember Wong.
Um, so Happy New Year to everyone, welcome back again. And so, um, the only thing I have is basically I have an update from Principal Bach at Chaska High School and just wanted to share some highlights from twenty-twenty-one. I'll go through these quickly here. I'll go through these quickly here. So for academics, Chaska High School has commended five, or five commended and two national merit semifinalists for 2021. The volleyball team earned the academic gold honors and have a cumulative team GPA of 3.75 to 4.0.
Wow.
That's crazy good. In the arts, Chaska Theater presented outstanding performance of The Importance of Being Earnest, Basker Wild. There were six choir, five orchestra, and six band students who earned all conference recognition, which is absolutely fantastic. In athletics, the volleyball team had, were the west, Metro West Conference champion. The coach was named the section two, four, the two AA, AA, two four As, Coach of the Year. The junior volleyball player is the star, Star Tribune Athlete of the Week, and the, and their senior was named to the third team All Metro by the Star Tribune, and also to the AAA All-State Team. The football team was suburban district champion, and seventeen football players were recognized for individual awards, including one who was Mr. Football finalist. The sophomore finished, sophomore finishes third at the Metro West Conference Championships in cross-country. Nine students signed the national letter of intent to participate in college athletics. And the dance team suites the Metro Area West Conference Championships in jazz and kick for both varsity and JV. And finally, for activities, Strive students packed fifty-five boxes of food for Feed My Starving Children. Key Club and Deca both host food drives through the Chaska, the Chaska High School Hawk Hall. National Honor Society hold, is holding their blood drive and, or held a blood drive, and the robotics team finished in the top five position and was chosen for the first alliance at the mini regional tournament. They also won the, the Engineering Outreach Award, too. So really solid year for Chaska High School, and so congratulations to all the students on some great work and, you know, for all that the staff and the faculty and the staff there do, great work to everyone at the high school. So thank you to, you know, for all, for everyone, for all of your hard work and for all your dedication to, you know, helping our kids be successful and thrive out there.
Awesome.
That's it? That's it, that's all I got.
You kind of never mentioned the coaches. Coaches are.
Yeah, they're unsung heroes.
Yeah, so congratulations to the coaches that helped get, get those athletes to strive the way they do, so.
Absolutely.
All right, Mr. Grau.
Uh, I was just going to shout out to the snow-removing crews in Chaska. I was reminded of how great they are because I visited a northern metro community and my first, this was Saturday, and it hadn't, it wasn't a recent snow event, per se. Actually, yeah, my days are messed up because of the holiday. It was Saturday, it was New Year's Day. And I just commented, I was in the residential area, and everything's snow-packed and driven on, and, and you just don't, you don't really see that around here. You see it clean and out, you know, so I just, it's something, to be honest, sometimes I take for granted because I drive around a lot of streets of Chaska. So when I noticed, that's the first thing I said to my wife when we started pulling into the neighborhood where we're going, it's like, man, feels like it did snow up here today? Because it just feels like they hadn't cleaned the street.
You're like driving to Minneapolis.
It's just like, yeah, so just a shout out to the, the great groups of individuals to do that. Even when they wake me up and I can hear it coming down the road and that knows I need to go out and snow pull my own driveway, it's still appreciative.
It's nice that it's done so you can just do it once.
It is.
That's the important part.
There's just something about that sound, though. Wakes you up, so, appreciate, that's all I have.
You're good?
Yep.
Oh, I really don't have much. I actually have a question, MLK Breakfast, what's the status?
The status is it's planned to be held on January seventeenth at eight AM at the Chaska Community Center.
Okay.
So.
Is it like, do you have the RSVP or anything like that? No? Okay.
It's at the community center?
I'm sorry, I said.
Event center, right?
Yeah.
Good catch, I didn't catch that either.
Yeah, thanks for catching that.
Yeah, I know. It's all, only the community development.
Yeah, now that you see, I'm, I'm forcing you back into your old role here.
I would have answered that much better.
What time is that? Is it eight or nine?
Eight.
Eight o'clock, yep, yep. And the keynote is Jonathan Palmer, he's the executive director of the Halle Q. Brown Center in St. Paul.
Okay.
So they're very active in human rights and equity and inclusion efforts, diversity efforts.
He facilitated some of the.
He did, yeah, there were some.
He did the one up at the community center for the KBS.
Thursday night one, yeah.
And he facilitated some of those community discussions.
Oh, sure.
Do we need to post a meeting notice of more than, of more than a quorum of us attending?
Yes.
Yes, so.
We can, we can post that.
Just in case, yeah.
Yep.
I, I was planning on being there, I'll assume you.
Yeah.
Most everyone will be.
Yep.
I'm excited to be in person again, I missed.
It was well done last year, but yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah, totally agree.
Uh, that was, I guess, I mean, other than I was out New Year's Eve to pick up a couple groceries, and I noticed the crews like salting things, and I was like, right on, guys, good job. So otherwise, no, I don't have anything to report, that's it.
Okay. Yeah?
Um, yeah, same with the snow. If I have to drive out of Chaska after a snow event, I would just rather not, so I'm always, I judge where I'm going, if, you know, I need to go to Target, oh, that's fine because it's in Chaska, I know our team is out there. Um, but yeah, anywhere else, even Carver, my goodness, sorry, not to call Carver out, they're lovely. Anyways, moving on.
I don't know if that sounded real sincere. I know.
Um, anyways, some events coming up, there is a food distribution on the thirteenth at the same spot as usual. Coffee with a Cop is at the North Caribou, up by, the one by Rainbow, Rainbow Cub. Wow.
I still call it Rainbow.
Must be with your, must be your notes about somebody earlier.
You know, the best of us get locations mislabeled sometimes.
Right. Up by Cub, so that's on the twentieth at nine AM. And then, just want to give a shout out for Citizens Academy. I had the privilege of going through the last one, and as somebody who's lived in Chaska my entire life and was a police explorer and all of that, I still learned so much at that Citizens Academy. So it goes from January twenty-fifth to March eighth. I believe you can still sign up, you can still sign up, so you can look at Facebook for that, it's on Tuesday nights. And it just is, it's so much fun, you don't, I don't know, I don't know what, I don't want to say, I didn't expect it to be fun, but it was.
I'm looking at her face over there.
That's, it was, it was far more, I had more fun than the fun I expected to have.
Which wasn't much fun at all.
I don't know what to say to that, but you will have a lot of fun at this, at that event. So definitely sign up for that. I think it usually fills up pretty well, so I would jump on that now. And then, yeah, just Happy New Year to everyone, let's hope for a better 2022 than a couple years ago. So that's all I have.
Governor, I mean, Nate, anything?
I have nothing more to add.
Julie, anything?
No, we just have other two events, and now we do another parents and community awareness event coming up.
Julie, you're going to have to come up to the mic, they won't hear it at home, sorry to do that.
Sorry, the thing you literally gave us a flyer for.
Yeah, for the flyer.
None of us mentioned.
Suddenly gave us to mention.
It was on my list to mention.
It was, okay.
Yeah.
I need brownie points.
We didn't want to steal your thunder, right?
I need brownie points.
We are holding a parent and community awareness night, and so mark your calendars, it's free, it's very important, it's all on, about our social media and what our kids are doing and what they're involved in. It's Act United is going to be the speaker, and Jessica Bartholomew is very, very knowledgeable, it'll be a very good event, and you get free dinner, so Chick-fil-A is sponsoring the meal, so, and Chaska Lions, shout out to them for funding this event for us, for the police department, so, but, yeah, kids and social media, so, important topic.
Is there a, is there a kind of a age group where you tie this to, like?
Well, for sure the middle schoolers.
I'd like to say sixteen to eighteen, but I think it's probably more nine to.
They have access to.
Absolutely.
You can through electronic device.
If, exactly.
So is, is it, is it that yours, should bring your children to this? Or is this for, for more for parents?
We're targeting more the parents and then like the teachers, and we're sending this out to the school district, hoping we'll get the intercultural specialists there also, school counselors.
Well, it's good that we had this conversation about whether or not, because I know probably people would bring.
Their kids, yeah.
Their kids, and that's, I mean.
Can I scare him straight?
I can see.
Scare him straight.
I could, yeah. I can see where this would be geared toward parents, that's kind of why I asked a question of that.
Absolutely.
But it's, it's very interesting, I was sharing up here with Councilmember Hubbard that my kids have been on me about wanting to download Roblox, and I told them, because I, as much as I don't want to feel old, I researched it to figure out what it was and everything, I kind of knew what it was, but it's that online community, right? And, and, and I just like, nope, not going to do it at this time, like, there's just, like, there's good people out there, there's not bad, there's not good people out there. And my youngest is like, there's no bad people at Roblox, and I'm just like, I just love your innocence. You know, but it's, it's just very timely, because I'm literally having that thought process and conversation.
Conversations, yeah.
Because they got Kindles for Christmas, and, and they want Roblox, and it's the, well, this friend had, does it, and this friend, you know, it's just like, nope, not going to do it, sorry, new topic, so.
Well, sign up and encourage your friends to share.
Thanks for, thanks for putting this together.
Yeah.
You got anything?
Yeah, I actually have something.
Hold on, let's go with Jake first.
Mine was good news.
I have no report.
All right, Matt.
All right.
Would this be what you want?
Well, we have an update on one of the funding sources for City Square West site, so we did get recommended for awarding our full LCDA ask from the Met Council, which is close to $2 million, it's 1.914 million. We're still pushing to get the legislative tours for, Senate tour for bonding and, you know, we're.
That's this month, right?
Hopefully. But still pushing, still pushing on that, but, you know, with the LCDA, there's a lot of competition in those, and so I think one of the things that really stood out to me is that I think they really liked the project, and they really liked how we're working with the businesses in the strip center there to, to look at how we incorporate them into maybe a more sustainable, sustainable place to thrive in the future, if that's what they decide they want. So it's, to get the full funding, especially, especially when it's almost $2 million, and I forget what the total amount was, but it was like 10 million? I mean, I, I think we got about a fifth of, I think we got about a fifth of the total funding for the entire metro area.
What is LCD?
Uh, Livable Communities Demonstration Account. So we've received it for, like, I remember it was a big deal back when Culver Ridge got built, we got a million dollars for that to help with different aspects of it, we got a million dollars down when we did the Aon project down here on the river, so it's, it's not something you get every day. So a great job to Nate, or former Nate. Former Nate did a lot of work putting that together, as well as Kevin Ringwald did a fantastic job with application, but also he was sort of our spokesperson when we went through the interview process that we had a couple weeks ago, so it was great news that we got on Christmas Eve? I don't know, it was a good present. I think we got it on Christmas Eve, so it was a good.
I think that was.
That's cute.
It was a good, good present, so.
I know, I just yelled that.
So exciting news there.
Did you put it in the little box and wrap it for him to unwrap? Surprise.
Uh, just update on, we actually have lots of interviews going on right now, so we have our assistant roles, so we go through, we did three interviews today, we have one tomorrow and one on Friday, second round next week. We have our electric director position, we advertised, re-advertised, I think we have some good applicants in this time, that as soon as we get done with the assistant, we'll move into that. And then we're starting a process tomorrow with the fire department with Richard Fersman's group to, when we're going, I did the same thing with the electric department, too, but going through and doing a process to sort of talk about the future of the fire department, what types of goals and, and objectives, what they think the, a good characteristics of a great leader coming in. We use that information to help us sort of drive down that sort of final job description that we get out, which we plan on the third week in January, which would put us, you know, interviewing the end of February, beginning of March, so I would anticipate around the beginning of April that we'd see somebody move into the, into the fire position. I think that's going to be a highly sought-after position, is my gut, I think Chaska Fire has a really good reputation out there, so I expect that we'll have some real quality applicants for that, so. So that's, I mean, that's three, that's three department heads, three out of.
That's intense.
Yeah, that's.
How are you doing, Matt?
What changed, what changed in the electrical position that we get, so, because we hardly, God, it's the first time we're on.
Yeah, I think, I think a couple of things. I think one thing is I think people sort of expected Andrew was going to apply for it.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
And so they just did, they just didn't.
We don't go through it.
And so then he reached out to people, say, hey, I, Andrew would be awesome in the position, but that's not what he wants. And so, so I think once he reached out to people, I think that sort of opened it up more for people saying, oh, yeah, I'd really like to, to pursue that. So I, I think that was a big difference. And then a couple of that, I think will end up being quality candidates, just had things at the time that just didn't work out for them at that, with that timing, so.
That's good.
Yeah.
You know, hopefully it's good for us.
Yep.
That's a, that's a huge position and such a valued position here.
Yep.
All of them are, but that was.
Yep. And then just a reminder, meeting schedule, so.
Oh, now you take away my thunder.
I'm done.
Wow.
Drop the mic on.
Drop the mic, I'm done.
I was going to say, I would have nothing to talk about, so, and that's all right, too. But one thing I do want to talk about, that I'd like to see whoever's in that position at some point, is we have to relook at our notifications of people, because all we heard at the last meeting is they weren't notified.
Oh, yeah.
And somebody asked tonight, I felt kind of odd that there was no one here, and I want to make sure, maybe we need to revisit our notification area.
Oh, yeah, well, it's, it's actually, it's one of the, it was probably the first task that, that I told Nate he had to do as the non-assistant administrator. This would actually be the community development director.
Okay, but we really need to look at that because we have really been getting blasted on that, and I think maybe we're just not doing it right.
Well, so the plan's going to be is that it's going to be more of a work, you know, well, I, I don't want to tell Nate how to do it.
Well, yeah, I don't, I don't expect an answer to that.
Yeah, but the plan, the plan is, is that it's going to come through the planning commission as a recommendation back to you guys as far as a change.
I just, I just.
Because it is going to require an ordinance change, because our ordinance right now is pretty specific to say 300 foot, and, you know, it's not, we don't.
We're not clicking right.
No, and we don't, I, I got to be honest, we don't always stick to that 300 foot, we, I mean, we go more than that oftentimes when, but the thing that's been troublesome lately to me is even on those ones that we've gone more, you still get people, they're just like, well, we should have known about it, and it's like, well, we're going beyond what the ordinance even says, so, so, yeah, that is.
I know, but it, it never seems like we go far enough, but I think the 350 might not be enough.
Well, I think it's, I honestly think it's going to get less down to us identifying who to send notices to and providing opportunities for people to self-identify themselves, that we are, that, you know, Chain Assen does a fantastic job of this, I think, is that they have signs out there that, you know, you know, proposed development here, click, you know, it's, you know, scan this URL code and it's, you know, they'll get you on a You know, scan this URL code and it's, you know, they'll get you on a list, something to that notion. Because I think if we just rely on notification circles, I think, because part, people don't always check their mail anymore either. Because, I mean, mail has become less important because people get so much junk mail. And so I, you know, so I think we need to come up with a completely different thought process on this.
Okay. Like I said, not looking for answers, just want to make sure that we do that. All right, now I'm going to go into what Matt was talking about. So obviously, next meeting is Martin Luther King Day, which is, we do not have a meeting. So then we move that meeting to the 24th. And then there's a fifth Monday, and we pretty much got word it sounds like now that'll be a work session for us.
I think it's going to be work session only, though.
Are we talking like maybe six o'clock?
Yeah, like six o'clock.
Six work for you guys?
Yes.
Six o'clock and the objective would be to try to get done by 7:30 so that it's not, it's not going to be a long night.
And then, and then February, we have the same issue. Our first one would be the seventh. The 21st is President's Day, so city is closed. So that would move the meeting to the 28th. And then we go back to the normal first third. So the first two months are kind of, kind of out there a little bit. So.
Yeah, one other thing I'll just bring up too is, and we were sort of talking about at the beginning, but we are having a focus group of citizens come in for tours of our city facilities next Thursday, night of 13.
Oh, we already got them picked.
Yeah, we got people coming in. So, and it might be that we end up having a couple of sessions because there was, you know, I'd say about half the people that we got a hold of, it didn't work that night, but they had a real interest in it. So we're going to have a focus group next Thursday that we're going to take them on tours of the city facilities so that they can sort of understand some of the work that we're doing at looking at our city.
Do you want any council there? We can have more than two.
We can't have more than two.
How did you, how did you guys go about finding these people?
Yeah, I was wondering.
We, we sort of went at, to different, we went to different groups that have sort of been in existence in, over the past few years of people have shown an interest. We tried to get a real diverse group of people. Think about people in the, the community that you might be opinion leaders, but not just, you know, people that, you know, have been in the community forever, but also new people in the community. So we tried to just sort of sit down and brainstorm a group of people that we thought was a broad representation. We can get over the, the list of people to you, so we can see it.
No, I, I kind of am too. I would like to see the list.
Yeah, no, we can do it.
It'd be nice because if we get approached, at least we can kind of maybe, oh, yeah, okay, you're on that group.
But it might be good to not have council there. I always like that.
Yeah, I mean, they can talk for everybody.
Say what they want to say and not feel like they, we're not special to start with, but people, I feel like people.
I just didn't know. Sometimes you want somebody there, maybe?
I, you know, to me, this is, this is really just informative. We just, we, yeah, I think we realized, especially when we did sort of the council tour and the work session is, you know, if that was a, you know, for many of these places you went into, it was a first time for you guys to, to go into some of the areas. So if it was a first time for you, it's definitely going to be a first time for other people too. And so to me, it's more of that information. And if we look at it and say, hey, this was really successful, we might say, we might want to do another one of these in February just to get, or maybe, maybe it's more of an open house that we, you know, set it up where it could be for anybody. But, you know, we're starting with sort of a targeted group to begin with, to get some feedback on what they're saying. And from that, what we hope is that it'll help us sort of, you know, guide what might be the next stages of the strategy we use to get more engagement of the community into that.
I don't think I have it. Is there anything else we're missing? We talked about Martin Luther King thing. Talked about this.
What about fire, their thing, their weekend, their?
Oh, the fishing contest, we'd have another meeting.
Okay.
Because that's like February, the third or fourth or whatever.
Like ninth?
What about sculptures or they happening?
It's the first Saturday of the month.
I don't think sculptures are happening.
Okay. That's the one thing I remember last year.
Right?
Yep, the fifth. Fishing contest is the fifth. So, yeah, we'd actually have three meetings between now and then, which is on.
I'll report back.
No, no.
I remember that happening at the end of January.
All right, anything else? Last call. Otherwise, we do have a short EDA meeting following this. Just really adding the TIF policy change that we've already approved at the council level.
There's Santa parade.
What's that?
Santa parade.
Talk about it.
I wasn't a part of it.
Who was? That was Santa.
Well, Santa, I heard it was amazing and cold.
Amazingly cold.
Not as cold as it was the previous.
Someday my neighborhood will get on that list.
Two years ago was.
No, last year it was like 50 degrees.
Yeah, last year was really nice.
And then the next day, we had like this blizzard.
That was, that's that blizzard that lasted for a year.
This year wasn't that bad though.
Oh, last year was nice.
Last year was nice, but this year it wasn't that bad.
It wasn't as bad as it could be.
I don't know, I wasn't on it.
It wasn't, but, oh, Santa told me he got cold.
Santa looked like Jack Nicholson from, from The Shining by the end of the parade.
Or Mike Zimmer from his nose last night.
Well, hopefully he had time to recover from all that.
He's probably in.
I will say, as being part of the parade, unfortunately, our, the Santa truck ride broke down, which was unfortunate. There was a.
Probably about a third of the way through.
Electrical issue. But we, as usual, we were able to remake it, make it work. And it's still very, I don't think it was quite what we had the year before, but big difference in, to me, in weather. And COVID kept everybody in a little bit more. But I think this thing can build momentum. I, I do think that there's a lot of people that had a lot of fun seeing, and except for when they see the Grinch in the front seat of the pickup, they kind of run. And I mean literally, they would run when they saw the Grinch.
Nice.
But overall.
I had a couple of adults say that the Grinch, they thought it was Mrs. Claus. I'm like, I could hear, hey, it's Mrs. Claus. I'm like, Mrs. Claus.
They were probably talking, they were talking about Marshall.
Oh, okay.
We had, what is it? Barry the Elf? No.
No.
Buddy, Buddy the Elf.
Well, now it's Barry.
I was watching that video on Facebook over and over again, thinking fitness goals of Buddy the Elf doing the jumping there.
I will comment on that momentum.
He's jumping across the thing and doing high jumps. It's like, dang.
I will comment on the momentum piece. Obviously, the way it was, it's set up right now is to be COVID friendly because that's what we, but it would be curious. I'd be curious if you did it like the other parade and did it all around parade route and people came down.
I think for the businesses.
At a time or, because that was the only thing I, I mean, you guys do your best to get through. I will speak that I'm one of the last neighborhoods, so it gets late. And so like, I'd just be curious, but like, I clearly know why we do it the way we're doing it now because it was kind of like, hey, we're not going to crowd people on the streets in the middle of a pandemic.
But I think, I think that there's, there's ways to shorten that up. There's a couple of places that we go that we don't need to.
So I'd be curious. No, it's super fun. My kids were super excited and.
But I mean that way, there's not many people. All right. Yeah, but I think Santa Parade went off, was another successful and thanks, I know. Kevin Wright does a ton. And I think Julie, she's got her fingers in it. She wasn't at this one this year.
I missed it. I felt bad. I was out there. But I can tell you, there was lots of comments. I was just looking at some of them. I don't know if you guys saw them, but lots of really positive comments on Facebook.
Oh, I didn't, no, I didn't, I didn't see any of that. On PD page?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there was a lot of them that people said about how, you know, they liked it and Merry Christmas and for keeping our community safe. Thanks for all you guys do. Just, yeah, a lot of nice comments. But I think there was some on the city page as well.
Good.
Kevin, you can say that up. He's listening, but I don't know if that one was what I did.
Okay, with that, anything? Motion to adjourn?
One last thing. So I had, last week I had a chance to ride along with the Snow Rule Crews. They were in downtown after, when they were doing that thing at 2:00 in the morning.
Oh, did you take them up on it?
Yeah, I did take them up on it. So I rode along, I got up, I got up at like 1:30 in the morning to meet them down there at 2:00. And just like watched the parade of trucks going through there. And it was just, it was really, really amazing to watch what they do. I mean, because you've never seen it. It's just like they have this big loader that's basically just constantly running and then these trucks just keep pulling up, you know, just getting filled, get filled, just this parade of trucks and then dumping them, you know, dumping the snow in other places. And it was just like a really, it's really amazing just to watch how efficient they are and like keeping all that snow moving. It's just really impressive. And to see like, you know, a dozen of these trucks just constantly moving, it's just amazing. It's, you know, a lot of great work that these guys do with very much, and this is, you know, as the mayor was saying, is there's a lot of, a lot of silent heroes out there who like, if they weren't doing this, the streets would be packed with snow. It'd be really hard to get by in downtown Chaska if they didn't do this. And they don't get a lot of credit because then they're, they do this in the middle of the night, so it doesn't impact everyone during the daytime. And it throws them off in their schedules, but it's something that, you know, they do, you know, without complaint and it's just great work. So just want to, you know, give a shout out to all those guys in Public Works who do this every time there's a big snow or even a medium sized snow because it's so important for us to have clean streets.
Do they, so is it in the middle of the road?
Yes. Yeah, so what they do is they have like, a crew that goes out at like at midnight and then pushes it to them.
But they, they don't do it until midnight?
They start at midnight and the midnight crew actually pushes it.
Just like in our neighboring community, when it snows, they put it in the middle of the road for like a whole day and then, then they collect it.
It's on the side, midnight when it comes in.
It's tons of fun. I'm sure Jake can attest, around, around town.
You know, being new in town, it was kind of a surprise and I liked the way it looked. And then I was really shocked the next day when it was gone. So.
Yeah, and so I've seen that collection.
But it was a little slower than other communities.
No, they, they always, everything goes to the curb, then they'll bring it out and they'll put a winrow on each side and they pick it up and then they blow, and then remaining back.
Yeah, yeah, no.
I remember, so I used to work for Public Works and I did that. I remember one night we did it on a Friday night. The boss decided we're going to pick up snow on a Friday night at midnight. Well, that's when things were still hopping, too.
Yeah, everyone's up there, yeah.
And we had a hard time. There was a lot of vehicles stuck in the snowbanks and a lot of them probably shouldn't have been driving. And it was quite a night. It was very warm, it was very warm. Most of them was melting before we could catch it. So it was just weird, but I always, we always chuckle about that night that, so.
But it's a great work.
Part of the fun.
Great work out there for the, that the Public Works team does out there. So just want to give them a shout out.
All right, awesome. I agree. All right, last call? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Carriers, we're going to move right into, into EDA meeting. We'll call the EDA meeting to order at, so it's 7:00 o'clock. We're not going to do that. We'll call it to order at 9:47. Mr. Person, it was, or is this, you can call this one though. EDA, you're kind of in on that one, aren't you?
No, but he can do it.
He can do it. Commissioner Hatfield?
Here.
Commissioner Hubbard?
Here.
Commissioner Wong?
Here.
Commissioner Grau?
Here.
And President Winchell.
Here. All right, moves us to adopting the agenda. Corrections or additions to the agenda, if not, entertain a move to approve.
So moved.
Not sure which one first, but I'm going to go with Commissioner Hatfield, second by Commissioner Hubbard to adopt the agenda discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Item four is approving the previous meeting minutes from October 4th, 2021, EDA meeting. Again, if there are no corrections or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hatfield.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Grau to approve the October 4th EDA meeting, meeting minutes. Discussion.
My only discussion is, we approve these minutes at the December 20th meeting.
I was going to wonder that too, because I think maybe this is supposed to be the last meeting, the one that we had.
Yeah, it should have been, it should be the December 20th.
Okay, that, that, I wanted to make sure, but I figured they couldn't turn them around.
There's a problem with our agendas. On the regular agenda, there was no visitor presentation and there was no previous meeting minutes. And this one has the wrong meeting minutes. So something happened to our, they got to look at that, what happened with our thing.
You're right, though. I mean, it should be the December. I, I wouldn't approve them then because we should have them in the, we'll bring them back to the next EDA meeting.
I take it back. I rescind my movement.
So you rescind your motion? You rescind your motion?
Yes.
All right, so we are gonna, not table it, I just want to skip it.
Yeah, we just skip it.
We're just going to skip that due to an error. Moves us into item five, discussion, update the TIF and abatement policy for corporate industrial development, which is, this is the same one that we approved in council. I don't know if there's any, it was in, this was in, just consent, I believe.
Yeah. I mean, the, the intent I have in both the city council and the EDA is the city council really authorizes the EDA to provide assistance. So we want to, it seems weird, but the, in a lot of cities, the city council and the EDA are two different bodies. And so we want to make sure that since this is a policy for assistance going into the future, that both the city and the ED, city council and the EDA board are adopting this. But it's the exact same policy as the city council one.
And, and I tried, I tried reading through that. Is it the blue that we're approving and the red was leaving?
Yeah, so I, in the packet, I include, sorry, I'm just trying to bring it up. I included two versions. So one was the red line version and the other was the clean copy. So the clean copy has all the changes incorporated already. I wanted to make it clear to you what's being changed. So that's why I included the, the red line copy.
It was obviously very clear.
I don't know, maybe it was just me, but I, so this, so the first one is the final copy?
The first one is showing the changes that were made.
Well, not mine because I got the first one pulled up and it's, there's no marks on it.
No, yeah, the first, the first one is the clean copy.
I'm back in the regular council meeting.
Oh, I'm looking through the EDA.
Okay.
Okay.
And so, but yeah, everything that is underlined, some of it's red and some of it's blue. But everything that's underlined would be additions. Everything that's struck through would be removals. The color codes look like it was two different people editing it or something. I mean, that's what I'm taking. I think it was me just going in on two different occasions. Or two different times, yeah. So, but basically if it's colored, don't worry, ignore the color.
The color doesn't matter.
It's strike through or underline, right?
Color does not matter.
But it's colored is a change. Or technically, there's, you see that bar in the left.
Anything that's underlined is an addition. Anything that's struck through is a removal.
Well, Nate's first day on the job.
Yeah.
Well, now that we got that cleared up.
If you want to see where any of the changes are in the left bar, if you see that bar in that left margin, that means there's a change in that line someplace.
I wouldn't, I would not confuse anyone further. Just pretend you didn't say that. This line indicates.
But I don't, if you want me to go through and kind of explain some of the changes, I can do that. Sort of the, the big picture and what we're trying to achieve.
Is there anything, I don't think there's anything ginormous. It was, to me, like some words and some dates and.
Yeah, I think, you know, by and large, what we're trying to do here is just clarify how we calculate the eligible ca, or the eligible contribution to make that clear to developers in particular. And the other piece is just providing some clarity on abatements and how we've approached that. So the, the policy as it had been written in the past, it really tied abatements and two situations that the county's abatement policy would come in. So that's really tied towards county road improvements as a result of development. What we have in fact done over, you know, since that policy was, was approved was, abatements have been provided to things like data centers that don't qualify for a TIF. But they do bring substantial benefit to the city through their utility draw. So in situations where there is that significant benefit, but the project is not a TIF eligible project, we would want to say that, you know, the policy for abatement, you know, could apply, right? At the end of the day, council and EDA get full discretion as to whether they want to, you know, even if the policy is saying that it's an option, right? You get the full discretion to say yes or no. And the policy is written that way.
We're just wanting to be clear with developers because with lack of clarity, they come up with their own interpretations and then just be.
They're very creative folks.
Then it just be, it, it creates frustrated conversations.
Well, and I think the other piece of it too is that it gives staff, you know, confidence when we're going to talk to developers that, hey, look, this is a policy that has been reviewed and approved by both the city council and the EDA. You know, these are things that are included in it. And so when we're talking to you, you know, about your eligibility here, this is a serious discussion. You know, it doesn't make it a guarantee. And I think developers will understand that. But it does give some confidence in that discussion, that negotiation.
All right, thanks. All right, any other discussion or questions for Nate or Matt? Otherwise, entertain a motion to update.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Wong.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Grau to update TIF and abatement policy for corporate industrial development. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Other business, anyone? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hatfield, no, Hubbard, second by Commissioner Wong to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post name sign. You're adjourned, good night. Thanks, see you in three weeks, two weeks, three weeks.
Yeah.